At least initially, and then I'm not going to use it.
A nice turnout, huh, Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Nice turnout, huh?
They were told they had to be here.
Not, most of them weren't.
They're here for you.
No, I'm not saying that. But we had this many last year, too. I was actually gratified by it, yeah.
Did you have it set up like this?
Yeah, yeah, it works pretty good because people are going to eat, you know.
Well, it's good they can write stuff down.
And they can write stuff, right? And you'll see if you stay, I do some scenarios where it's helpful for them to pull their things out.
Okay. Yeah, I saw the green and the red. Oh, ready? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's a special meeting of the Santa Clara City Council. I would like to ask Assistant City Clerk the confirmation of a quorum. Do we have a quorum of council members here this evening?
Yes, you do, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and this is a training session, which will be put on by our city attorney throughout the rest of the evening. We are showing live on Zoom, but there'll be no interaction with the Zoom participants, meaning they won't be able to ask questions or have any public presentations. Throughout the event this evening, the city attorney will ask for public comments or questions, but there is no official public presentations this evening. So, one last thing, if you're not wearing green, raise your hand. All right, it's pretty good. You have green cards in front of you if you need them. All right, Happy St. Patrick's Day. I'm going to turn this over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to wait until we get our title slide up, and then I'll begin. Oops, we're going to turn this off. Can we turn this mic off now, since we're extra mic? And go even to the title slide? Or I can do it, can't I? There we go. And if we can turn this mic off, I'll be competing. There we go, perfect. Excellent. Good evening. My name is Glenn Gugans. It is my honor and privilege to be the city attorney for the city of Santa Clara, our fair city. It's also my honor to be here tonight to present to you a whole rogues' gallery of people. We've got city council people in the front. I know we've got a lot of boards and commissioners who need to get their AB 1234 certification. We've got employees, and we've got members of the public. I know both here in person and I think a few online. Nora will help me keep track of that. Happy to have you be here to hear a presentation on training for open government law and ethics in compliance with AB 1234. We'll talk more about AB 1234 in a minute, but I also will say, in addition to all those required topics, we're also going to talk about some of the local rules and laws that apply just in Santa Clara that were designed specially for you. This is a reprise of a session that I gave back in October of 2023, a good while, boy, a year and a half ago now, in these very chambers. We had a great turnout then as well. I've done this now. This could be my eighth or ninth time. Eventually, I'll get good at it. Hopefully, tonight will be a decent version of it. And so, welcome to everyone who's here. Whatever motivated you to be here, whether it's you need an AB 1234 certificate, whether you heard there was free pizza at intermission, and yes, that is true, whether you saw lights on in City Hall and you came rushing, probably not that, probably not the prospect of listening to me and Luis speak to you for, it could be about three hours. Whatever motivated you to be here, thank you, and I appreciate it. There's certainly other, more enjoyable things for you to do tonight. It is St. Patrick's Day. I am not wearing green either, but I'm going to have to grab a card. And who scheduled this on St. Patrick's Day, for God's sake? I'm Irish, I should have known better. Thank you all, thank you all for being here. Even though there's more enjoyable things for you to do, there's really probably nothing more important for you to do as public officials, as public servants. In our roles as public officials, I don't think there's anything more important than learning and embedding rules of good conduct. And I think that's more important now than ever. Public trust of government is at record lows, certainly at the national level, at state level, and, you know, challenges here, of course, on the local level as well. So, I know this continues to be an intense time in Santa Clara's history. There's a lot of opportunities, there's a lot of challenges, still some divisions, you know, out in the community. But I'm hoping in some way, by developing a common idea of what it means to act in an ethical way, to understand the rules as public servants, that that could be useful in helping bridging, you know, some of those divides. It's really important to have that connection, you know, with each other and kind of a common purpose in order for us to get things done. So, thank everybody for being here. Hopefully, this in some small way can help bridge those divides and teach us all some things. Lay of the land. First of all, what this is and what it isn't. I said this last year, too. I am not here to defend or to criticize anyone's conduct. And if you've come here tonight to hear that from me, as I said last year, you're going to be disappointed. That's not what this is about. Instead, I'm here to provide information on the legal and ethical standards that apply to the conduct of public officials in California and here locally in a way that I hope is clear, that's useful. There's some practice tips, as you'll see throughout the presentation, and occasionally, I hope, engaging. We've got some scenarios, too, that we'll run through with you. You're not going to be able to be a passive audience the entire time. We're going to mix it up a little bit. I hope also, at a moment or two, it'll be mildly entertaining. That is, the standard I set for this is an ethics presentation. If I am mildly entertaining, then I am doing pretty darn good. As I mentioned, the presentation will include a discussion of Santa Clara's local laws. There's been actually some good work done, you know, here and a lot of rules that apply just to us. But the focus will definitely be on the state laws because this needs to be an AB 1234 compliant presentation. And there's a lot, really, to talk about in order for me to be able to issue to those of you that need them AB 1234 certificates. AB 1234, I've said it a bunch of times, a lot of you know what it is. I'm going to tell the ones who don't, you know, what it is. AB 1234 is a law that was passed in January, went into effect on January 1st, 2006. Among other things, it requires within one year of taking office and then every two years thereafter, elected and appointed officials, appointed ones that might receive reimbursement for work that they do, to have this open government and ethics training. So, you need to take the training, you need to get certified, you need to get a certificate. Not coincidentally, the topics we're talking about tonight are going to be the ones that are necessary from that. From the RSVP list that was shared with me, I know that there are a number of boards and commission members here tonight. Can you folks all raise your hands? I know that there's usually a good turnout, that's terrific. There's a really nice turnout for that, similar to last year. I recognize some of you. I've mixed it up a little bit, some of it will look the same and some of it will be different. I know we've got the mayor and almost every, we've got every council member here, right, except for Member Chahal, who's traveling. And I want to thank them for being here, especially because you are all already in compliance with your AB 1234 requirements, according to the city clerk. And so, you being here, I think, means a lot to get a, I think, a little more robust version, a little more particularized version, and I think a more useful version than the one that you take online or even at other conferences. Also happy to have the, our new elected city clerk here as well, our newly elected city police chief, also unbeknownst to him, but I'm now saying providing security in the event and things get a little rough. And so, welcome to you. And I have to say, we've encouraged employees to come, particularly ones that are Form 700 filers, right? Because there's some requirements in what you disclose and how you conduct yourselves as employees as well. And there's also some duties and responsibilities for employees that are liaisons to boards and commissions to understand the Brown Act and help folks that might not be that familiar with it to comply with the Brown Act. So, we have a number of city employees here and appreciate that. Housekeeping for AB 1234 people. You have to be signed in. If you came and you're looking for an AB 1234 certificate and you didn't sign in, you should go do that now because you need to be here for the entire session. And the way we track that is you signing in. I keep an eye on you during the whole thing, and then you sign out at the end and you issued your certificate. You must be physically present for the full training. So, folks are watching and think I'm going to send them a certificate. I can't do that. You have to actually be physically present to get that certificate. And as we'll talk about at the end, we'll be able to issue your certificate, actually a signed version of it, before you leave. I was a little bit of a Scrooge last year. Members of the public who took this, who enjoyed it and know that they stayed the whole time, asked for a certificate. And I'm like, they can't, they can't get a certificate. It's just for people who need a certificate. I'm going to give anyone who's here the whole time a certificate that demonstrates that you've suffered through, together with all of us, this important evening, and so you'll get a certificate as well. So, that's our lay of the land. Here are the topics. There's a lot, there's a lot we need to go through. I'm going to start off with ethics principles. We're going to talk about the local rules, Santa Clara Code of Ethics and Values. Then we're going to switch over to the state laws, conflict of interest laws. Luis Haro here from my office, Deputy City Attorney Luis, is going to be helping me. He and I are going to tag team some of that. We're going to tag team perquisites, also known as perks and temptations of office, with all those subjects. And then we're going to take a break. And we're going to come back with government transparency laws, fair process laws, and some closing remarks, and yes, award ceremonies. The 15-minute intermission is going to be, we're going to try to be tight with that. We're going to have pizza and other stuff. I wanted to have corned beef and cabbage, but my assistant wisely vetoed that idea. That just wasn't going to work. So, there's pizza, there are, I think, some themed cookies. I think there's some Irish cookies, you know, out there and drinks. So, you'll need a break, have that, you can even bring food back in here. I got a dispensation for that because we want to start the training up right away so you're not here all night. This is not your typical training. There will be a lot of lecturing, sorry, because there's just a lot of material. But there will also be, as I mentioned, some interactive scenarios. That's why you have the green and the red cards. I'll explain that to you when we get to those first scenarios. We're also going to have some fun test questions interspersed tonight. And as I mentioned, there will be prizes. Some of the slides are heavy on information. I think I break every rule, as I was telling Member Hardy of PowerPoint presentations, by how I've designed this slide. That's a little bit on purpose because I really want what you all received, you know, today, when you came in, to be a resource for you. There's deeper, denser, you know, more complete materials, but this is actually a pretty good resource. And so, some of the slides are heavy for that purpose. This is a training. I'm going to try to get through it without questions. If you're desperate to ask a question, we'll include it throughout. If you've got public comments at the end, I'm going to make the open the floor for public comments. I promise you, though, if you don't, if your question didn't get posed or didn't get answered, I will stay here as late as anyone who wants to ask me questions, wants me to stay here to answer their questions, and I'll do my best to do that. We even had one person, Jonathan Wright, you sent me a list of questions. It took me maybe three and a half months to respond, but eventually I responded to all the questions that you posed. And so, I'll try to get on that, even if you write me questions in this area, want to be helpful. This is being recorded, and so it also will be available on the city's website, like last year's presentation. Finally, I didn't do this properly last time, so before we dive in, I want to give thanks to staff. A lot goes into putting on this little production. City Clerk provided a lot of support. The public information and IT people here, of course, staffing the meeting, David Knight, you know, and company, the building crews that set this up, not a small feat, to get this all, you know, reconfigured in this way. I think it works really well. From council offices, Marie and Melissa were super handy. But the MVP of it definitely was Mandy Mills from my group. Linda Boring also helped her. She just put a ton of work into this, and so, please, thanks, maybe even round of applause if Mandy is here for everyone who contributed to this. My lawyers are also here, a good number of them in the back, one of them helping me present. Hopefully, they'll delicately nudge me if I've said something that's not right. Okay, with all of that, let's start with ethics principles. What are ethics when people talk about ethics? A lot of different definitions. It originates back in ancient Greece, as you might imagine, where a lot of Western thought originated, from the Greek ethos, meaning character. It's now commonly understood to mean the beliefs or ideals that characterize a community, a nation, or an ideology. For our purposes today, it's the laws and guiding principles that govern and encourage good conduct by public officials and employees. To borrow from a Rotary saying, I think I've got a Rotary brother or two, you know, sister here tonight, and sister, putting service above self, right? Different people, you have different phrases that kind of define this, but it's all really substantially the same. Aristotle, Plato, and other ancient philosophers put this concept of ethos at the center of their musings on truth and goodness. This actually picture is a Raphael portrait, that's Aristotle and Plato in the middle there. And lots of different cultures develop different standards for what ethics are that are unique to their cultures, that are unique to their societies, that are unique to their histories. It's a lot like integrity, commitment to really doing, to doing the right thing, right? When no one else is looking, ethics is a version of that. And again, service above self, the difference between what you have the right to do and what is right to do. So, all of these go into concepts of ethics. What ethics is not are reasonable disagreements amongst people about what the right thing is to do. People are going to balance interests differently. But if you go about the decision-making the right way, if you make a decision that's in the best interest, you know, of the community, you've engaged in ethical conduct. There's challenges in our modern society about how to be an ethical person, and one of those is public perception. You might remember this from last year. There is a public perception that public officials are corrupt, that when they go into a career in politics, they throw their ethics in the trash can. Will Rogers, in trying to encourage political reform, quote in this thing, in this particular cartoon, "We have the best politicians money can buy." A lot of people think that, and that can be challenging. There's certainly plenty of stories out there that fuel that perception, and we all get tagged with that, right? Any story about a person behaving badly gets projected onto all of us. And so, it's hard to overcome that, that we do not get the benefit of the doubt. Another challenge to trying to do the right thing is human nature. Ethics can be relative. It's hard for humans not to put themselves at the center of the calculation of what's good and bad. Ethics for public officials, of course, requires to look beyond our natural instincts and think of the public good, not our own personal good. I used this quote last time, I love it, I'm going to use it every time. It's a Russian proverb, "The church is close, but the road is icy. The tavern is far, but I will walk carefully." Moral relativism, right? You're putting yourself, okay, what do I want to do? I'd like to go to the tavern, I'll be careful. I tried to find an Irish quote for this. Most of them were about drinking and farming. I'm afraid stereotypical, so I didn't, I didn't have very much luck with that. I did find a couple that I liked, "May you live to be 100 years with one extra year to repent." I think that's a good one. And then this one actually is pretty good and even more relevant. "There's no need to fear the wind if your haystacks are tied down." Right, when all, everything, all is going crazy. If you got yourself squared away and you're going about your business the right way, the wind won't matter. Those things won't stir. Those things won't stir, won't get you off course. Finally, the third challenge to people being perfectly ethical is, the world is complicated. Sometimes what it means to do the right thing is obvious, and sometimes it's not. There's a lot of rules, and it's not always easy to understand how those rules will apply to a particular situation. And you're often balancing interests, as I mentioned before, between, you know, one primary interest and another. If you are elected or appointed to something and you're, you want to fulfill your duties there, you want to participate in every decision. But sometimes you can't, you know, and you shouldn't, and you need to balance that issue, interests. And yet, despite all of those challenges, public perception, human nature, the world being complicated, none of this is an excuse for misconduct and for behaving improperly in office. Public officials are and should be held to a higher standard under the law by their peers and ultimately by the people that they serve. At a minimum, this means learning and complying with the rules. And ideally, this means modeling good behavior, encouraging good behavior in others, and developing and supporting the rules and institutions that engrain ethical conduct into your community. So we're all here kind of doing that together today. Getting some feedback when I come over there or when I come over here. I'm not quite sure why that is. This is turned off. Do I sound okay out there? Okay, very good. So, speaking of community, Santa Clara's Code of Ethics and Values. There's a long history with grappling with this and developing these standards in this community, probably long before 2000. But the most recent effort, you know, really began in earnest in 2000 with the development of the Santa Clara Code of Ethics and Values. In its own words, these codes and ethics and values are designed to provide clear, positive statements of ethical behaviors reflecting the core values of the community. Sound familiar? Ties right into a lot of those other principles we talked about. It has broad application. Applies to the mayor, applies to the council, applies to board and commission members, provides to volunteers for the city, and all city employees. Not all of it applies to everybody, but there's aspects of it that apply really to everybody. And they're not, it's not an ethics code so much as it is guiding principles rather than a formal set of rules. And that's not a criticism of it. It's, that's just how it's set up. It's not an actual ethics code. If you violate, this particular thing happens to you. It is guiding principles and designed to have people be their best self in office. These guiding principles are listed here on this next slide. Supposed to be ethical, supposed to be professional, service-oriented, fiscally responsible, organized, communicative, collaborative, progressive. That's a law. Those are a lot of things, and we all should be striving to do all of those things. There's also elements of it that put what's considered ethical behavior into practice. So how do you, how do you do all those things? Well, you're trustworthy, acting with the utmost integrity and moral courage, you're truthful, you do what you say, you make impartial decisions, free from bribes, unlawful gifts, narrow political interests and other elements identified there. You're fair, you give equal opportunities and due process. We'll talk about a lot of these principles later on with specific rules. You show respect for persons, confidences and confidential information. And when you conduct official city business, you tell people who you are conducting your city business. And ideally, if you're not conducting city business, you're not telling people who you are because it's not relevant. You shouldn't be lording yourself out there as a public official out in the community. There's also really good concepts in these rules that talk about values in practice. Again, professionalism, service-oriented, fiscally responsible, all these things, you know, consistent with the codes are highlighted and described with really, in some instances, some good examples about, you know, how that translates into your actual conduct. There's a lot of parts that make up the code and ethics. There's the actual code of ethics and values. I've got the little package of them right here. There's the behavioral standards for ethics and values, one for council people, one for, here's the code, here's the much more extensive behavioral standards. All this is on the city website, as noted below. But I thought this was particularly helpful. And last year I didn't distribute it. This year I did. This is kind of a little, a little cheat sheet, a summary, right, of most of the key elements of that. That's a good thing to have and to refer to as a, as a nice compendium of all the different pieces to this. So, this, this, Santa Clara's Codes of Ethics and Values probably deserves its own presentation, and we're actually talking about having that be something that we do in addition to this. It deserves more shrift than I give it here, but here's some practice tips, and maybe not practice tips so much, but takeaways from, from this. Review the Santa Clara Codes of Ethics Value documents. They apply to you. There's some really good materials in there. Endeavor to incorporate these principles into your day-to-day conduct as a public servant and always place the public's interest above your own. Very well stated, very useful. Okay. Now a little bit of fun. This, last year's quiz, if, for the folks that were here, was a lawyer movie-based quiz where I gave quotes and you had to guess what the movie was. Some people did pretty well, other people didn't get anything. I, I think it was a little self-indulgent of me. It was movies that I liked that were lawyer movies, and I tried to give good quotes that were clues, but it was hard. This one, this year's a little easier, I think, I hope. And it's, the, the theme is iconic city moments and places. Okay? So I'm going to give you a slide. You've got an answer sheet, right? Did everybody get their answer sheet? And hopefully something to write with? You could borrow it from your, from your colleague. We're going to go through these, and then at the end, we're going to total up how you, how you did, and there will be prizes awarded to the first three at least, you know, people, depending upon how well you did. Needless to say, this is an ethics presentation. You should not be looking at other people's sheets. You should not be using Google Photos to take a picture of this and go, "Google, what is this, you know, picture?" You're in ethics training, for God's sakes. Please abide by those rules. And, and don't, you know, purposely whisper wrong answers, right? So other people might write down that, too. That would be very Machiavellian and inappropriate for this training. So for this first one, what city hosted this famous kiss? That's for two points. What did this kiss celebrate? That's for one point. And then what is the date of this event? I want it within three months this time. Sorry, I know that seems harsh, but it actually might be a clue to the next one. What did this kiss celebrate? So iconic city moments and places, question number one. Please write your answers. Okay. With that, Luis, are you up? Oh, let me introduce it, and then you're up, for sure. Luis here, violating, like he does almost every day, my memo to him that says, "Don't outdress your, your boss," ever. Has both outdressed me and then has a little shamrock pin on his lapel. But Luis is great. He's going to come up. We're going to, we're going to split all this. We're going to start with financial conflicts, which Luis will do, and contractual conflicts. It's going to come back to me. We'll talk about campaign contributions and then limits on conduct upon leaving office, all in this third category of discussion, conflicts of interest.
Thank you, Glenn, and good evening, everybody, and St., Happy St. Patrick's Day. My wife is part Irish, so I'm hoping some of her luck will be imputed in to me. I'm already feeling it. I'm already feeling lucky. And so our first topic here will be in relation to financial conflicts of interest from the Political Reform Act. The Political Reform Act is a state law that was first adopted in 1974. It is found in the Government Code, and additional supplemental regulations are promulgated by the FPPC, the Fair Political Practices Commission. The Political Reform Act covers a wide range of topics, including financial interests, campaign finance, lobbying, and gifts, to name a few. The next few slides, though, will cover financial conflicts of interest. So the Political Reform Act applies to public officials, right? So the first question is, what is, who is this public official? And so under the rules, a public official is every member, officer, employee, and certain consultants of a state or local agency. And when we say consultants, that's usually a consultant who's operating some kind of government function. So that's the definition of a public official. Next, the question is, well, what does it mean to have a role in the government decision? Well, you can have a role in the government decision by making the ultimate decision, that is, by authorizing, directing, voting on, or committing the agency to the decision. And that can happen frequently. For example, the city manager or council executing a contract, approving a project or proving some kind of permit, right? Another way you can have a role in the government agency is by participating in the making. That's by providing info, opinions, or recommendation for the purpose of affecting the decision. So this could be, for example, drafting an agreement, negotiating an agreement, making recommendations to the ultimate approving authority. And another way to have a role in the government decision is by attempting to influence, and that is by contacting any official in the agency for the purpose of affecting a decision or contacting another agency on behalf of your agency. And so that brings us to the question, what is financial interest? So there's various, various ways you can have a financial interest. First, it can be in a business entity if the public official has over a 2,000, over a 2,000 valued interest or a management position. It can be in real property if the owner, if the public official owns property and the value of that property is over $2,000, or whether the proximity of that property is within 1,000 feet of the subject of the decision. Financial interest can be source of income. It can be source of gifts. If an official has a financial interest in decisions that affect the official's personal expenses, income, assets, liabilities, as well as those of the official's immediate family, that could be an interest. And an important note, when the FPPC mentions immediate family, that's typically dependent children or spouse. And another financial interest could be certain campaign contributions. If a council member or certain commission members receive a contribution in excess of $500 within 12 months of the decision, that could also qualify as a financial decision. And there's more to come on this. This is the Levine Act, a relatively new law, as applied to city council members and planning commissioners. And notably, the threshold for this was increased to $500 January 1st, 2025. So this is the FPPC's four-part test. Interestingly, it's a four-part test now. I believe it used to be eight-part test, then it used to be a three-part test, but now we have a four-part test. And so, and this is also a test that we apply ourselves in the city attorney's office when analyzing whether a conflict exists. And so this is kind of the analysis that we go through. So the first question we ask ourselves, is it reasonably foreseeable that a decision will have a financial effect on the public official's financial interest? If no, there is no conflict. If yes, we proceed to step two. So what does that mean, right? Well, reasonably foreseeable means realistic possibility. Is there a realistic possibility that the official has, that there could be a financial effect on, on the decision-making, right? The key word is, is it realistic, is it a realistic possibility? And so the second question we ask ourselves, will the reasonably foreseeable financial effect be material? If no, there is no conflict. If yes, we proceed to step three. And so here, material means, going back to this slide, sorry, kind of lost track here. These are kind of what is considered material, right? They're financial thresholds or proximity-based. And the third question we ask ourselves, can the public official demonstrate that the material financial effect on the, on the public official's financial interest is indistinguishable from the effect on the public generally? If yes, there is no conflict. If no, we proceed to step four, right? So what does this mean? This is the public generally exception. So in some situations, even if the public official has a material financial interest, they can still vote and participate if they can demonstrate that the material financial effect on the public official's interest is indistinguishable from the effect on the public generally. And so what this means is, if a public official can show that their interest is, if they can demonstrate that the decision affects 15% of residencies in the official jurisdiction, if that interest is their primary residence, right? If they can show that the decision's going to affect 15% of people in the jurisdiction, they qualify for this exception. Or if they can show that the decision's going to affect 25% of properties, businesses, or individuals in that jurisdiction, they can also participate on that basis. But please note, the applicability of this, of this exception is very fact-specific. Typically, will require an FPPC opinion to officially make that determination as to whether this exemption applies. And as to the fourth question, does an exception apply? Our next slide covers common examples. So the first exception that's commonly seen is what I call the routine maintenance exception. If a decision solely has to do with repair, replacement, or maintenance of existing streets, water, or storm drainage infrastructure, an official can participate even if they have a financial interest. So for example, there's a project that's just doing routine maintenance, and official has property within 500 feet. Under this, under this exception, they could participate. And we just covered the public generally exception, which covers decisions that affect 15% of residential property or 25% of all property in the official's jurisdiction. And it's also important to note, with regard to real estate interests, that different standards apply. If an official has property within 500 feet of the decision, they are deemed to be conflicted. And the only way to rebut that presumption is by showing, by clear and convincing evidence that there is no material conflict. And that's a very, very hard burden to overcome. That's the highest standard in our civil, civil law, right? However, if the official has property within 500 to 1,000 feet, we look at several, we look at several factors. And those factors include the properties, will it affect the property's development potential, income-producing potential, highest and best use, character, or market value? And the official has a burden here of clear and convincing evidence. And that brings us to another set of practice tips. So number one, know your financial interests. Number two, ask yourselves whether the decision impacts in any way your financial interests. If a conflict exists, do not participate in, discuss, or influence a decision. Disclose the basis for recusal and leave the room. So that's an important note, right? What's required if there's a conflicting decision, leaving the room is required. And when in doubt, please seek legal advice and consider recusal.
So I just wanted to emphasize a couple of the points, if you will go back to the previous one slide back. Luis, no other practice tips? Yeah, very good. Knowing your financial interests is, is important. We, we run checks on real property interests, but if you have other interests, either in your Form 700 or that are exempt from Form 700 filing, we're expecting you to identify those interests, you know, for us. We can't advise you specifically on conflicts, you know, that you have, but we try to be helpful and point you in the right direction, and we'll even facilitate a solicitation from the FPPC, you know, for opinion on that, if that becomes necessary. So it's kind of, it's incumbent on you to be aware of things that might create potential conflicts for you. The, the when in doubt, seek legal advice, you know, and consider recusal. We will do the best we can to help you sort these things out. You should seek help out for these. And if it's a close call, you're better off recusing yourself, right? If we've got time, we can do an analysis, we can go to the FPPC. But if there's a close call and you're like, you know, it just doesn't, it doesn't seem right to me, I don't feel comfortable doing this. right to me, I don't feel comfortable doing this, the right answer for you is to recuse yourself. So err on the side of caution. So I think we've got another, our, our next question going up. Okay, here's our, here's the iconic city moments and places, question number two. Get your sheet out. What city is depicted in this image? What is the occasion that's being celebrated? And what is the name of the monument in the background? Two points for city, one point for the occasion, one point for the monument in the background. Yes?
The spelling count.
It, for you, yes. I'm going to come check your spelling. Nobody, everybody else, you can spell it how you want. No, 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 you, no problem. If you can say it and it roughly resembles, you know, what it is, then you're good. Yeah. It's your, you're on your own. You have to, it's the honor, honor program. Very good. Okay, I think, is it me up now?
I'm still.
You're still up?
Yep.
Contractual conflicts of interest. You are still up. Sorry, Louise. What are you waiting for?
All right, we just discussed financial conflicts under the Political Reform Act, and that brings us to another field of law that relates to conflicts of interest. And this is Government Code 1090, which specifically, specifically covers contractual conflicts of interest. So the court principle under Government Code 1090 is that it prohibits self-dealing in government contracts. The general rule is as follows. A public official may not make or participate in making a contract in their official capacity if they haven't, if they have a financial interest in that contract. And we'll delve into that a little bit deeper in subsequent slides. But you should know, there are severe consequences if there are any kind of violations of Government Code 1090. One of which is it can render the contract void. There could also be criminal prosecution, or even the requirement that the public official resign. And of course, as with any kind of violation of conflicts of interest, could also come at the expense of erosion of public trust. And so how is it applied? Government Code 1090 applies to officials, members, officers, employees, and sometimes consultants. When Government Code 1090 applies to legislative body, to legislative body member, the entire membership is precluded from entering into the contract unless an exception applies. So that is a very important distinction, right? And the rules we just discussed in regard to financial interests, right? It's usually sufficient if a member who has a conflict recuses themselves, the rest of the members can still participate, still participate in that action. Here, if a government official has an interest in a contract, that prohibits the entire legislative body here, typically the city council, from voting on that issue. That's a very important distinction. For employees and advisory body members, which are typically our boards and commissions, the rule there is, if there's a full abstention of the conflicted member, right? They're accused and they abstain from the matter, that is usually sufficient and the matter can, can proceed. So it's important to note that Government Code 1090 applies to all types of contracts. It applies to construction contracts, purchase contracts, development agreements, grants, and donations. It's very wide-ranging. It's also important to note that making a contract includes more than just voting on it, right? It includes negotiations, discussions, reasoning, planning, and the give and take which goes beforehand in the government making decision. A financial interest is also broadly defined. It can be direct or indirect, positive or negative, right? There are some limited exceptions to Government Code 1090, particularly where interests are deemed so remote that the FPPC and the legislator have identified areas where the, the body can still proceed. However, the conflicted government official must still recuse themselves and abstain from participating in that matter. Government Code 1090 and the exemptions in particular are very fact-specific. So it's, as always, which will be a theme of the evening, when in doubt, seek legal And we'll conclude this topic with some practice tips. Number one, ask yourself whether you'll personally gain from any contract you are working on or being asked to approve. If a personal gain is possible, seek legal advice. Hard theme. This could be a tricky area.
Now I think it's me.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Levine Act, Louise mentioned the Levine Act. We're going to punch that up a little bit because it's a new and interesting and important Prior to January 1, 2023, campaign contributions were not treated as financial interests for elected officials. Then SB 1439 was passed, and effective Jan. 1, 2023, both council members and planning commissioners, used to just be planning commissioners, are prohibited from participating in a decision if they've received a campaign contribution from a party or a participant to the decision in excess of $500. Actually, it was $250 when it was first enacted. It's been increased to $500 within the prior 12 months leading up to that decision. You're also prohibited under the Levine Act from accepting a campaign contribution from a party or a participant in excess of $500 for 12 months after the decision. If you receive such a contribution, you must return the contribution or disclose the campaign contribution and recuse. Okay? So you can potentially participate if you, in a timely way, return it. Otherwise, you need to disclose it and you need to recuse. The covered decisions that you have to consider is not every decision. It's really ones that are specific to people who might benefit. It's any, includes any license, contract, permit, or entitlement, with some exceptions. You also now need to disclose campaign contributions of this amount on your Form 700. That's a new requirement. And there are some changes that went into effect just in Jan. 1, 2025. We already talked about the increase of the limits from 250 to 500. But there's also certain kinds of actions that are now exempted from this requirement. Contracts valued under $50,000, small contracts, aren't governed by the Levine Act. So a campaign contribution wouldn't be a financial interest, you know, in that case. Competitively bid contracts that are required to be awarded pursuant to competitive process are not required, right? The idea being that there was a whole other process that went into that, that you didn't influence or, or affect. And if the contract's going to be awarded to somebody through a competitive process that you got a campaign contribution from, you're now okay to participate. Labor and personal employment contracts, and contracts between two or more government agencies are also now exempt. So there's still an evolving area, a lot to think about here. Again, this is one of those areas where you need to be aware yourself. If you have just, have run for office and have received campaign contributions within the last 12 months, if you're running for office while you're, you're serving in a position, you know, that's covered, you need to keep track of these things. And again, for those on boards, commissions, and council people, review the agenda for potential conflicts that might arise from campaign contributions. Be vigilant for participants who have a financial interest and advocate for or against a decision. One of the tricky parts of this that we're still trying to sort out is, it's not just the person who might benefit for the contract, it's people who might turn up and advocate and support the contract, or license, or other entitlement. If they've given you a campaign contribution in excess of $500, you may also need to recuse yourself. So you kind of need to be aware, we all need to be collectively aware of that. Again, seek legal advice. Sorry, this is a new and evolving area, but that is something we definitely need to be, be attentive to. Unrelated, but we're trying to point out local laws throughout this presentation. If you are a person campaigning for office, not all jurisdictions have the local campaign laws, but we do in Santa Clara. So Santa Clara Municipal Chapter 2.130 has a whole host of rules that apply to you and how you conduct campaigns and how you, whether or not you have campaign limits or not, and how much money you receive, and how you need to actually disclose campaign contributions that supplement state law. And so if you're a candidate in Santa Clara, it's more complicated for you. So know these other laws and be aware of the local law as well. There are some special rules for senior officials upon leaving office under the Government Code. First one is there's a one-year prohibition on lobbying under Government Code Section 87406.3, or official. Elected officials and city managers for a period of one year after leaving office are prohibited from representing any person for compensation appearing before or communicating with their formal agency to influence that decision in any kind of administrative or legislative action. So you can't just go out, once you've been on the government side, if you're a senior or elected official, and start representing other interests in front of that agency. It's prohibited. The idea being, of course, that you would have potentially undue influence over the organization, you know, that you just left, or special knowledge about the organization that you just left. So there's supposed to at least be some time period between when you might engage in that lawful, but limited enterprise. The other important aspect of this is there is, there are rules that prevent you from, while you're in the midst of engaging with somebody, seeking some kind of approval in front of a government agency, from negotiating any type of arrangement or prospective employment with them. Again, kind of another obvious thing. If you are in a position of authority with respect to somebody who is talking to you about obtaining something, you are not supposed to be negotiating with them for a contract. And that is also prohibited conduct. It applies to these senior officials, and it also applies to employees that are designated by the city manager who, to be at such a level that that kind of negotiation and influence would be inappropriate. So our city manager has to update that list as to who this applies to. So conflict of interest tips when leaving office. Be aware that after leaving office for one year, both state and local lobbying prohibitions apply. When participating... Sorry, I left out this note. Santa Clara, again, like other jurisdictions, has a local version of this rule that's a little bit different than what the, with the state law version is. And it's, it's found in Santa Clara Code Section 2.145.030. So be aware that leaving office, you need to imply, comply with both the state and local rules. And when participating in any city business or decision, you should not be seeking future employment relationship with the person or party before you, okay? A rule you need to be aware of. Okay, we're on our first hypothetical. Took a while to get here, but here we are. Please refer to your materials, and please unclip your green and your red cards, because I will be asking you to display those for all to see in response to some of these questions. I will read this scenario to you, and I will ask you these questions. Okay, here we go. Historic lands commissioner, love me some Gables, who is also an architect, is scheduled to vote on a proposed mixed-use project in her neighborhood to determine its impact on historic resources and make a recommendation to the planning commission. The project is being proposed by her father, Maximum Density, for whom she is estranged. The night before the hearing, she tells her fellow commissioner, Ms. Shun Style, that she loves the project's architecture, but she hates her father and is likely to vote against the project. The night of the hearing, Ms. Gables listens to a staff presentation, asks some questions, and then texts the city attorney, describing her relationship to the project applicant, and asking if she should recuse herself. That does happen. By considering to recuse herself, has Ms. Gables acted in compliance with conflict of interest laws? By considering to recuse herself, has Ms. Gables acted in compliance with conflict of interest laws? If you think she has not complied with conflict of interest laws, put up a red card. If you think she has complied with conflict of interest laws, put up the green card. Let's see the cards. Oh, I love a mix. I love a mix. And we've got a mix. I see mostly green, which means she's complied with conflict of interest laws, but I see a good number of reds, and I want to think what the, I want to ask what the greens are thinking. Where is my district council member? Albert, did you put up a green or a red?
A red.
Okay, I'll get, I'll come back to you. Who was a green? A brave green, right there. Hello, sir.
When in doubt, it's to recuse yourself.
Oh, so you, you flipped it, okay? I, maybe I tricked you with the phrasing of the question, which I like to do. So you're, don't, don't feel bad. By considering to recuse herself, has she acted in compliance with conflict of interest laws? A green means you think she has complied, okay? And you, so you say by asking to consider to be recusing herself, she's complied. Okay, all she's done is asked to be considered to recuse herself. What do the reds say? Who, who's a brave red? I'm going to, I'm going to, council people are kind of ringers on this stuff, so I might not always go to council people. Jonathan, I'll go to you.
So she, first she did recuse herself, but also she anticipated the question.
Yeah, that mic unfortunately isn't working yet. We'll, we'll figure that out. I'll repeat what you said, but you're spot on, right? She's already participated in this decision a little bit. She's listened to the staff presentation on the dais, she's asked questions. If you remember from the training, sorry, we go over it quick. You're not supposed to do anything. You're not supposed to, you're, if, if you have a conflict, the time to recuse yourself is before the matter is even heard. And you, you'll see us do that up on council meetings and planning commission, I know, and other people do that. You've got to check out right away. You can't be up there in the mix because any kind of participation violates that. And so I think the better answer here is, just by considering that's not compliant. If she actually has a conflict, she should have done way more than what, what she did and not put her poor city attorney in a position of having to figure it out on the fly after she's kind of already participated. Yes, comment, sir.
Did you say that she's gotten the ball rolling on compliance?
Could you say that she's gotten the ball rolling in terms of compliance? That it's a, if she hadn't already spoken to the fellow commissioner, would that have been the proper first step to take to reach out to the city commissioner and ask about potential recusing?
Yeah, she's definitely, she's definitely done something, right? It hit her, it just hit her a little too late.
Okay.
And so, yes, would it, would it be better for her to just, well, it's too late now, I'm just going to go participate? No. To actually reach out, you know, is, is the right thing to do. But she's, if, if she ends up having a conflict, she's really violated the rules already. So kind of a version of the same question, put in the city attorney's shoes, what advice would you give her? Should she recuse herself? Now we're kind of getting to the substance of it. Or is it okay for her to participate? Red says she should recuse herself, green says it's okay for her to participate. Okay, I'm seeing a whole, oh, there, there we go, okay. So I do get to call on you now because you're green, and you can tag team with Mario, who has some green thoughts as well. So what is your thought? Why would it be okay for her to participate?
Do you want me to answer?
Yes, I do.
Well, it's her father, not her descendants, so there's no financial interest with her father.
Right. And, and by some of the, by some of the facts that I tried to kind of tease out a little bit, it looks like she's, she's not a dependent, right? She's an architect. She's, she's not living with her father. The fact that it's her father isn't the kind of, unless she's a dependent of her father, isn't an obvious violation of that. But what about the other elements of this fact that may make you question? But what about the other elements of this fact that may make you question whether or not she should participate or not? What's in this that could lean the other way?
Well, what's the proximity of her home to the...
Yeah, exactly. Buried in these facts, like I like to do, to trick you and tease other things out of you, is that regardless of what... What you said is right. That's not necessarily a financial interest in the conflict, because her father's the proponent. But it says she's in the neighborhood. Where in the neighborhood? How close, right? Louise talked about the 500 feet, the 1,000 feet, over 1,000 feet. You've got to be aware of proximity, and we've got to run through the analysis in order to determine that. Are there other things that you might not like about how she conducted herself in this that might raise issues for folks here, over here? Yeah, very good. The comment was, she's already said she's not gonna vote for it before she's even heard anything about it. Right? That doesn't seem right. We're gonna train on that later. That's called predetermination. In things like this, you're supposed to reserve your judgment on things until you hear all the evidence. Should she be voting against something because she doesn't like her father? Sounds like she likes the project. I'm sorry?
Likely.
Likely, that's right. That's fair enough. Fair enough, likely. Likely. But it seems like she might have some other motivations. And so, there's definitely some issues on her predetermination and the basis upon which she might be making, you know, this decision. That could suggest bias, you know, or other things that aren't really related to the project itself. Those are things you need to be aware of. So this last question. If she's otherwise cleared to participate, right? We figured this stuff out. She lives far away, it's her father. What if Gables finds out that her kids are in her father's well? In her father's well. Her kids are gonna inherit... Her father's rich. Her kids are gonna inherit a bunch of money. Red, she should recuse herself, right? Otherwise, she's okay. Green, she's still okay to participate. Okay, we skipped over this one a little bit. Green. Green. Nice. Thoughts?
How likely is that her father is going to die in the next 12 months?
I'm sorry?
There was a 12-month of time period.
Uh-huh.
How likely is that her father is going to die in the 12 months?
Oh, how soon is he gonna die? Well, that... I don't think that's a fact in the FPPC regulations, but I like your thinking about that, because a lot of this involves a lot of different kind of thinking. What I was getting at was something we trained on, but we trained on it very lightly. Inheritances are actually exempt. Now, not every inheritance, and not under every circumstance. This was a little bit of an unfair, you know, tricky question. There are certain types of interests that you might think would apply but aren't. And she's not inheriting, her kids are inheriting. Are her kids dependents of hers? Maybe, right? If her kids are dependents, and it's a substantial inheritance, there may be other issues. But actually, under the rules, it's not obvious that she would have to exempt herself from that. So, let me just point out in this fact scenario, there's a lot of kind of best practices issues, you know, with this. If this question came to us, any one of us staffing, you know, aboard a commission on, and this issue came up, we would say, "Wow, there's a lot of things I need to sort through here. My best advice for you is that you should recuse yourself." The fact that they've already maybe violated by participating as much as they did, might have me call for a recess and see if I could sort through some of those facts, if there's an obvious answer, to get an answer, because I don't want to put anybody in a compromised position, right? Where you participated, but now you recuse, that's a little awkward. So, I might try to handle that a little differently. But best practice is, hey, try to spot this stuff ahead of time. If we're aware of it, we'll try to spot it ahead of time. If any of you are involved in anything, look at the agendas and try to spot it ahead of time. Best practice is, if it's a close call, or if it's coming up on the fly, recuse yourself. Try to identify it in time, so that some of the stuff we may sort out and be able to go to the FPPC on. So, next one. Confidavit of Interest Scenario Number Two. The city of Diablo Oscuro... Does anybody get the joke? Instead of Santa Clara, it's Diablo Oscuro, is considering using bond money to design and construct a mile-long, heavily landscaped parkway and pedestrian path in the median of one of its major but aging thoroughfares, La Camina de la Arena. The item is on the agenda for April 12th. Three of the five members on the council own property near the project. Councilmember Rico Suave operates a lash extension salon at 1500 La Camina de la Arena. Councilmember Be Careful lives about a quarter of a mile away, and Councilmember Justin Close lives five blocks north. Okay? You got those facts? They're on your paper in front of you, too, if you want to refer to them again. First question. Can Councilmembers Suave, Careful, and Close vote on the allocation of bond money for the project? First, Suave. Can Suave vote? Red for no, green for yes. Red for no, green for yes. I've got a lot of people who are a little gun-shy on this one. I see reds, I see greens. How about the green back there? Why are you thinking this is okay?
The entire community would benefit from the project.
Yeah, that's a nice instinct, but there could be some problematic facts, you know, in here. Do we have a red to say that we might need to look a little bit more closely at some of these facts? What are the red folks saying, sir?
We're not sure of 1500, how close that is to the other one. It could be within 1,000 feet or not. We need to check it out.
Yeah, no, that's right. And the thing we also don't know is, what kind of interest do they have in the salon? Right? It says he operates the salon. Is he the general manager of the salon? Is he the owner of the salon? Is he own the real estate with respect, you know, to the salon? Those things may determine whether or not his interest is material, but it says he's at 1500, right? It's at least on the street. And so, it might be possible, but we need more information. And if he's within 500 feet, the public generally exception is gonna be really hard to apply. You can apply public generally 15 to 1,000 frequently, but as close as this may be an issue, because he may be viewed as uniquely situated, right? For being, you know, so close to the property. So I think the better... I would say the better... We may need more info, but the better answer is probably no for not being able to participate there. How about Careful? What about Careful? I see green, I see greens. I see mostly greens. I also see a lot of bashfulness. Let's get from the red. What's wrong with Careful? Why can't Careful participate? What do you have against Careful?
Well, the fact that she co-owns...
She co-owns a construction company that might bid on the project.
I'm gonna get to that point in a second.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 you're good. That's a whole separate question. But that is a... So let's save that, because that's not yet... That's not in... That's in the second question, but it's not in the facts yet, right? So we're gonna cross that bridge. How about if she doesn't own that interest? Is she good? Right? She's more than 1,000 feet away, right? It says quarter-mile. What's that, 1,320 feet away? She's more than 1,000 feet away. I'm thinking she's good. I think Careful can participate. Of course, you want to know information, but I think Careful's good. How about Close? Can Close vote? Remember, Close is...
Five blocks.
Five blocks north.
Five blocks.
Right? That's the question, right? You need to know exact. And one good thing about when you're, you know, in the system, and Maria runs this system... No, you don't need to use the mic, I'm just calling you out. We actually have people's properties plotted on GPS, and we draw lines around it, right? And so we look at that. And if you come up, we endeavor to identify, you know, that for you, so you know you potentially have a conflict. But you need to know these facts, right? You can't automatically decide. These are very fact-specific things. Now, so question B, getting at your point. For Councilmember Careful, would it affect your answer if she and her brother owned a construction company that might bid on the project? Red for has no effect on your decision, green, this might change your answer. Green, this might change your answer. I'm seeing a lot of green, might change this answer. There's a red there. You were good, but Andy, why is it red? It's not... You're saying this won't change your answer.
Unfortunately, the... If we're gonna bid on it... Oh, sorry. Usually I don't need a mic. At any rate, if they were gonna bid on it, it'd be a 1090 violation, okay? Because you can't have a contract with a person doing it. If, however, they decide not to, I mean, the might is the problem. You have an uncertainty. The other thing that's problematic in this entire scenario is you don't know how big the city is. So that could affect some of the exceptions. Anyway, not on this one. This one, it's an issue whether it's a 1090.
That is true. The public generally exception could be affected by how big the city is and what the populations are in the various districts. But you've nailed the issue on 1090, right? You're right to spot the issue, but this is approving the bond. The fact that she's in a business that might bid on the project, they haven't bid on the project yet. If they did bid on the project, there would be a real problem, because that would be a 1090 violation. If they approved the contract, it would be void, and that would be criminal conduct for her under Code 1090. This decision itself isn't subject to 1090, because they're deciding whether or not to fund the project, but if she ends up having an interest in someone who bids on the project, that's when the problem will arise. So, very good. You guys are sorting that out pretty good. Final. Fourth Councilmember, Lotta Doe, raises $100,000 in her recent campaign for council, a special election in April of the previous year. One of the contributors was the CEO of the Diablo Oscuro Business District. Can Ms. Doe vote on the project? Okay, she got a contribution from the CEO of the Business District, and she's deciding whether to vote on the bond funding for this really cool project. What do we think? Red for no, she can't vote. Green for yes. Sure. Why not? All right, the... I like it when people hold up two. I used to give out yellow... I used to give out yellow cards, because that's like, it depends, but I get that. Yes. The yes.
We don't know enough about the Business District to be able to say whether this is any kind of a conflict.
Yeah. And what else don't we know?
How much the Business District contributed to her campaign.
Yeah. What was the amount of the contribution, right? And was it within 12 months? I teased out a date that appears to be close to 12 months, right? It's right on the edge. Was it within 12 months? Was it over $500? What is this person's, you know, relationship to the project? It seems like that they would be a potential viewed as a participant, because this project probably would be of benefit to the district. We would need to know more, and this would definitely be something that, without an FPPC ruling, we would advise do not participate. You know, you should recuse yourself, if in fact the 12-month and the $500 threshold were passed. So, very good. Very good. Okay, third question. I think we're gonna be racking up some points on this one. I'm hoping. Okay. Very good. What city is this? Two points. What are the houses in the foreground affectionately known as? And what style of architecture is this? Okay, the pizza got here early. Do people want to keep going to go to the natural intermission, or do you want to take a break now for pizza? What do you say? Keep going. All the green says we keep going. Put up the green card for keep going. Red says stop for pizza. Okay, we're gonna keep going. We're gonna jam, though. We're gonna jam. We're gonna jam. Don't everybody... Hey, the chief's here, don't turn on each other. Chief, I may need you. Okay. Perks and Temptations of Office. We're gonna try to jam through this. It's a lot of material behind. It's fun to do those scenarios, but they do take some time. I think it's me out of the gate, Louise?
Yep.
So, gift limits, right? No surprise. There's substantial provisions in the government code regulating gifts to public officials, right? With the obvious notion being that if you got a big enough gift, that might influence inappropriately how you're making your decision, and you won't be unbiased. Under the Gift Limit Disclosure Requirements, while the receipt of gifts by public officials is not prohibited outright, state law imposes limitations on the gifts and imposes disclosure requirements. Purpose is to discourage undue influence on public officials. What is a gift, right? A lot of this is defining these things, and there's particular definitions under the code. A gift is any payment or other benefit provided to an official that confers a personal benefit for which the official does not provide goods or services of equal or greater value. Right? If you're performing a service for somebody and they pay you, it's not a gift. But if you perform services for somebody and they pay you extra, or if they give you something that you're not giving them something back for, that is a gift. It could include a rebate or discount in the price of anything, right? If you get a, "I'll give you a special deal. I'm selling these for 200 bucks, but because you're a public official, I'll give you $50 for you." That's a gift. The difference between the value and what you actually paid is a gift. Unless it's something that's made in the regular course of business, right? If it's being offered to everybody, right? On a particular sale day, anybody who comes in, gets a $200 item for 50 bucks, just because you're a public official, that's not a gift. It was available to everybody, so it's not a unique gift to you, given the nature of your duties. Value limits. There's a limit on the value of gifts you may receive from any source. Current limit is $630. Goes up, there's a calculation for it. It was 590 a couple of years ago. It was 520 before that. They have an equation where they increase it every couple of years. It's 630 in any 12-month rolling period. It's not fiscal year, it's not calendar year, it's kind of a rolling period. So if it is... Based on when a decision might be, you know, in front of you. If you accept gifts in excess of $630 from a single source, bad news. You violated the Political Reform Act and are subject to civil and criminal penalties. Do not do that. You're also deemed to have a disqualifying economic interest in any matter involving the gift, and you cannot participate in the matter. Seems like, besides the fact, since you are subject to criminal and civil penalties, but you would also need to recuse yourself. There are disclosure requirements that I talked about. If you're a designated public official, and this applies to elected officials and all people filing Form 700s, state law requires you to keep track of and disclose in an annual report gifts you've received in your capacity as a public official. Designated public officials are defined as local elected officers or candidates and employees designated in the conflict-of-interest code. Designated public officials must report all gifts. There's a cap on what you can receive, right? But a different number for what you report. You have to report all gifts from a single source in any 12-month period in the aggregate of $50 or more, right? So if you get a $25 gift from a particular person, and then you get a $75 gift, you know, from that particular person, or say, a $40 gift, right? Neither one of those individually would need to be reported, but in the aggregate, you've crossed the $50 threshold, so you'd have to report them both. FPPC actually has a gift-tracking app that filers can use. I don't get gifts, or don't accept them, so I haven't had to use it, but some people do in due course, right? It's not necessarily, you know, an automatically nefarious thing. If you're receiving gifts and you need to track that, there's actually an app to help you track that. There are exceptions to what constitutes a gift. If you return it, or you donate it within 30 days, you don't have to report the gift, it's not a gift to you any longer. Gifts from family members or inheritances... Ooh, I trained on this a little late. Sorry, that question wasn't fair. Admission to a paid event when the official makes a speech. Some other examples here. If you're there for ceremonial role, if you just get information material, that's not a gift. Home hospitality gifts, if someone comes over to dinner, right, and brings you a bottle of wine, that's typically not treated as a gift. Here's an interesting one. Two tickets to a political or 501(c)(3) organization fundraiser provided by the organization. This is an important distinction. If you are invited to an event and you're hosted by the nonprofit, and it's a charitable event, that is not a gift, not a reportable gift for purposes of the state gift rules. However, if you are hosted by a developer, right, or for someone who buys a table and you go to that event, just because it's a charitable event, that's still a gift. You weren't given that from the nonprofit organization. You were given it by a private party. And the idea is that that may be something that may be trying to influence you with respect to their interests in front of the city. So that is a gift and would need to be reported. There's a lot of... We've talked about campaign contributions and special rules apply to that. There's a lot of rules on this. There's a fact sheet. The FPPC materials are actually pretty good, so refer to that. Other exemptions, things that aren't subject to the $630 limit are wedding gifts. Get married, someone gives you a wedding gift, that wouldn't be treated for these rules. Some travel gifts, and we'll talk about travel a little bit later. So there's local rules as well in Santa Clara that apply at least to city employees. It's a city manager directive known as a CMD, CMD 67 for all you employees out there. Applies to all city employees but not elected or appointed officials. Acceptance of any kind of gift is strongly discouraged, and you cannot accept a gift exceeding $20 or more. It will be in violation of the city manager directive, and that could be a disciplinary matter if you accept a gift. Very low number, maybe out of alignment with other things, but very strict rule and a good rule here that folks are expected to follow. So practice tips for gifts. Beware of gifts and the appearance of impropriety, even if you're falling within these gift limits, right? We'll talk about appearance of impropriety at the end. Doesn't mean you should accept it. I know there's examples of that, and like, "Okay, this is okay. I just disclose it." But if it's someone who's doing a lot of business or about to do a lot of business with the city, better part of valor is just not to accept that gift and give it back. Keep track of gifts, so make sure you're accurately reporting them if you do receive them. Assume a higher value of the gift. You're supposed to really understand and evaluate what things cost, right? It's the fair market value, if you will, of that gift. Assume a higher value if you're not sure. If it's close to the limit, decline or return it. If it's close to the reporting requirement, disclose it. If you get a $49 bottle of wine, are you gonna not disclose that? No, disclose it. I mean, it might sell for $65 in some other place, and then you're in a quibble about whether or not it's something you should disclose. If you're close to the line, disclose it. Air on the side of disclosure, air on the side of returning it. And then city employees, be very careful about the much more strict CMD limits. Okay, our next question. And what is the name of this statue? What's that? Yes, sneak a question in.
It's also probably a... You have a terrible... You get into some serious tax issues, and I had a tax lawyer explain that to me, so...
Yeah, that's right. If you are... That's a great point. If you have gotten a gift and you're like, "I shouldn't, I don't want to have to disclose this." It's a great point. And you say, "I'm gonna donate it to a 501(c)(3) corporation, so everybody wins. I don't have to report it, and I've now given it to somebody else." If you claim that as a tax deduction, that is not a valid donation, and that would be a gift. Because you've gotten benefit out of it, right? If you've received a gift and you donate to somebody and you report it on your tax return, that's a gift. So great point. Good comment. Okay, are we done with this? All right, behests. I'll go over this quickly. Behest is a concept where a person... Occurs when a person donates for charitable government or legislative purposes on behalf of or in response to a solicitation by an elected official. Elected officials do this. They'll ask for donations to city events or to charities. It's not illegal, but you have to disclose it because there's a possibility that there is influence going on there, someone trying to curry your favor by donating to some charitable thing. State law doesn't want to discourage it, right? Because that's how a lot of private companies find out about things that are good in the community and donate to them. So it's not illegal, but if you do it and you, in any particular reporting period, get donations from a particular donor in excess of $5,000, you've got a form you need to file within a certain period of time, and it needs to be reported. So elected officials who get a behest for a donation must disclose on this Form 803 and file the paper with the city clerk within 30 days of that behest. Again, something less than $5,000 doesn't need to be reported, but $5,000 donation or one that's aggregated in a calendar year in this case would need to be reported. Or an honorarium in the singular is payment you might get for a speech or an article or something that you do. Elected officials under state law are not allowed to receive honorariums for their appearances. Again, with the idea being that you shouldn't be profiting from your position as an elected There is exceptions to this for certain specified professions and for certain charitable donations. Guess what profession is exempted from this? Attorneys. Yeah, attorneys write these laws. They exempted themselves. But the idea is that there are certain professions. There's accountants and other people that are engaged in a professional activity. You wouldn't necessarily be violating this honoraria rule, and you could qualify for an exception. Again, like with gifts, you can give back or donate an honorarium that you receive as long as you do it to a qualified organization. You don't take it as a tax deduction, and you do it within 30 days in order to avoid the prohibition on honoraria. Okay. Boy, we've got a few more. That's a lot. I'm gonna do misuse or unlawful gifts of public funds, and then I think we're gonna need to break. Under state law, it is unlawful to use public resources for personal or campaign purposes. Okay? You can't use public funds. You can't use, it should say, public resources. Public funds or public things of value for personal or campaign purposes. Public resources include money, equipment, supplies, compensated staff time, right? Staff time would count. Telephone, computers, fax machines, et cetera. Violations may be charged as felonies or misdemeanors. It's a serious violation of public trust and of state law if you do this. Applicable sections are Penal Code 424 and Government Code Section 8314. Under our local rules, there's also an applicable, as there are for a lot of these. I haven't picked one out for all of them, but under our local rules, our Santa Clara Code of Ethics and Values has a guiding principle about being fiscally responsible. Demonstrate concern for the proper use of city assets, for example, personal time, property, equipment, funds, and follow established procedures. Using, aside from violating state law, using city equipment or time or resources for your own purposes also violates our Santa Clara Code of Ethics and Values. The bottom line for all this, all public funds and all public resources should be used for public purposes. There are some de minimis rules. If you photocopy something, you know, and it's one page, it probably wouldn't be a violation of this, but better to adhere to the strictest possible standard of this. Okay, I think we're gonna need to break. And this is the time, since the pizza got delivered early, for people in somewhat of an orderly way. Let's maybe start with the first two rows. Go out and grab yourself some pizza, grab yourself a drink, a treat. I don't know if we're set up out there for you to eat anywhere. It's a little chilly outside. I think it's okay for you to bring it back in here, and then we'll release the next group.
Turn off the broadcast.
It didn't work.
It didn't work, then you have to shut down completely.
Asking everybody to take their seats if you could, we're going to get started up. So I can get out of you, get you out of here at a reasonable hour, or a less unreasonable hour. He's right, and he's not shy. He's not shy, especially when he knows he's right. I didn't touch it, not on purpose. That can hear me? Okay, folks, thank you. Hopefully, hopefully you got something to eat. We're going to crank through these next few slides here to get to a scenario, and then we'll keep going. So appreciate everybody hanging in there with us. I think, Luis, you are on, on mass mailings.
All right, we were, we are back. In our last topic, we discussed misuse of public funds, and in that similar vein, we are now going to discuss mass mailings. Mass mailings by an elected official using public funds is prohibited. Mass mailings are defined as tangible item delivered by any means to a person's residence, place of business, or post office box, where the tangible item either features an elected official, an elected officer affiliated with the agency which produces or sends the mailing, or includes the name, office, photograph, or other reference to an elected official with the agency that produces or sends the mailing, where any or where all or any portion of the cost is paid for with public monies, and where more than 200 substantially similar items are sent in a single month. Some mass mailings are okay, such as letterhead, meeting event announcements, press releases, intern intra-agency communications, legal notices, and tax bills. An interesting note, no current FPPC rule prohibits mass transmission of electronic communications, but you still must be aware of prohibitions on use of office public funds for political purposes in the Penal Code, Section 424, and Government Code, Section 8314. And so just to reiterate, this mass mailing prohibition only applies to tangible things. Now, 60 days before an election, things change a little bit. The rule changes a little bit, and the definition of a mass mailing is expanded to include an item where the elected official's name appears in letterhead, including roster-type listing or logo on stationery or forms, including "for your information" or compliments of cards or stamps, an announcement of a meeting or event that is sent to the elected official's constituents related to elected official duties held by the elected official and which the elected official plans to attend. That is an official agency event or meeting where the agency is providing the use of facility or financial support. And the definition is also expanded to include a business card. So this only applies 60 days before an election. There are also some rules on travel, lodging, and expense reimbursement. I will be a bit brief on this slide, but the general rule is: Payment for travel, lodging, and reimbursement for expenses are considered gifts under state law subject to reporting requirements and limits. And for our purposes, I think the more important exception to describe here is the second bullet here. Travel expense reimbursements, where travel is for official agency business, and reimbursements are paid by the agency. Those are not considered gifts under the rule. And that brings us to a very old rule that we'll also discuss somewhat briefly. But the California Constitution prohibits gifts of travel to certain public officials by transportation companies, and this rule dates back to the days of California Southern Pacific Railroad activities in 1900s. Now, the prohibition does not apply to employees. It applies to interstate and foreign carriers, and applies regardless if travel is for personal or official business. Violation of this rule can result in forfeiture of office. And briefly, we'll discuss loans. All Form 700 filers must disclose loans received from other persons. Loans from commercial banks, lending institutions, or from close family members do not have to be disclosed. Loans over $250 from other city employees or from parties with whom the city contracts are prohibited. A personal loan over $500 to an elected official must be in writing and set forth key terms. And those key terms include date of the loan, loan amount, interest rate, and collateral, right? Basic terms. And we have a practice tip: avoid loans from people or companies with city business. And a couple notes on bribery. Bribery is addressed in Penal Code, Section 68. Bribery is the act of requesting, accepting, or agreeing to receive money or any other consideration in exchange for one's vote or action on any matter. It is a felony under both state and federal law. Under state law, the crime of bribery can result in prison time, two to four years, fines, the loss of one's public office, a ban on holding future offices, and may also result in a loss of retirement benefits. Convictions under federal law can result in prison time for up to 15 years.
Okay, back to me, and back to a question. I might lose some people on this one. I think a lot of the earlier questions haven't been that hard. I think this one might test some people. What city is this? Who designed the dome? And this last one might help a little bit. Who was inspired by this dome in designing the dome for St. Peters? Two points for the city. Point for the designer of the dome itself. Who was inspired by this dome in designing the dome for St. Peters? Another hint, one of my favorite cities in the world. Don't know if that's really a hint. It's why I picked this city as opposed to another city. Okay, this gets us to everybody's favorite moments: hypothetical scenarios. Okay, on the slide, on your materials. City contracts with an underwriter to facilitate the issuance of public debt to finance city infrastructure. City is evaluating whether or not to go out to bid or to extend its existing contract with this underwriter for two years, a time period during which city expects to issue a substantial amount of infrastructure debt. Underwriter hosts an annual client appreciation day at Pebble Beach, and reaches out to offer city's finance director, Anne Yolodit, to see if she'd like to attend again this year. Having just received her AB 1234 training, Yolodit inquires as to the value of the event, and is told it includes a round of golf at Spanish Bay that has a resident rate of $550 a round, If you're right up against the line, you're better off not accepting it, just like with the analysis we did on the disclosure requirements. So, very good. So, say Ms. Yulaudet is cleared by the FPPC to attend, they figure out that rate thing, so long as she discloses the value of the event on her Form 700. Should she attend? All right, so it's determined to be, the value is less than what the limit is, should she attend? Red, even if it's within the limit, she shouldn't attend. Green, sure, it's okay, it's within the limit. Why can't she attend? Green folks? Ms. Cox?
It's a should, so--
Ms. Cox is politely passing. And I get it, let's go. Who we had a green? Who else did we have a green? That it's okay, right? Red's okay, it's within the limit, or green's okay, it's within the limit, so sure, why shouldn't she go? Who's another green out there? Oh, there were some greens out there.
I'm going to say--
You're going to say, okay, green, why?
Because--
The way the question was asked is just, should she attend? She could pay for her own situation, and there would not be a question, in my mind.
You are right.
So that's why I said, yes, she could attend. So now, she's even cleared to go, I guess I wouldn't accept, I would pay for my own if I were going to go to--
And I think that could be what you were getting at. There's a little, Mike, I'm going to refine my question next time. If she pays for herself--
Right.
Right? Then it ought to be okay for her to attend, right? She didn't get any value at it. But if she doesn't, and they gave it to her, right, the answer's pretty obvious, right? Even if it's within the limits, they're in the middle of deciding whether, she's the finance director, right? She's deciding whether or not to re-up with an existing underwriter. She has a lot of influence on that decision, or whether to go out to bid, right? This is one that clearly falls within that area of, yeah. It's technically not a gift that violates the gift limit, but it's a pretty clear, this is not anything. And I've had questions, not here, from other folks, in Chula Vista, about things like this, and I'm like, uh-huh, you know, is it a violation of state law? But I'm telling you, you shouldn't do it. It just, it doesn't look good. So, third question. Ms. Yulaudet doesn't golf, but her daughter works at the Monterey Aquarium, which frequently receives funding from Otters R Us. So she'd like at least to go to the fundraiser. Can she? Can she go to the fundraiser? What do we think? Yes, green for yes, red for no. Green for yes, I think that's the right answer. I think that's, green's the right answer. Why can't she go to the fundraiser?
I thought that if the Monterey, or the Otters R Us are the nonprofit hosting it, she's receiving gift-- From a different group--
Yep.
--that she cannot attend because they are not hosting that event.
You are absolutely right about the rule, but not, but wrong in this particular context. And that's exactly the right rule to think of. It's not that she can't go because it's $250 and it's not above the limit, but she has to disclose it, right? So you've got the, so it's not as terrible as that, but you're, that is absolutely the right rule. Remember that, it's an important thing that comes up a lot. Okay, must she report the ticket on her Form 700?
One hundred--
Oh, sorry, question?
About $20.
This is not, in this one, I don't think I had city of Santa Clara. So you're right, local rule, they wouldn't be able to accept that at all, right here, local rule. Hundred percent right. Yep. I was very careful in this one, under state law. But you're absolutely right, the local rule's a good thing to remember, hundred percent. Okay. Now we're at intermission. Okay, now we're on to government transparency laws. Form 700 disclosures, Brown Act, Public Records Act, local rules. I think I'm up first, Luis, with Form 700. Okay, I'm going to try to pick up the pace a little bit. I think I've been the one, particularly with my long-winded intro, to get us a little bit behind. Form 700 disclosure requirements. Under the government code, public officials that are elected and appointed, and certain senior employees, and certain consultants performing city functions, as Luis talked about earlier in one of his slides, are required to disclose specified financial information as a obligation of their public employment. They do this on a Form 700, also known as the Statement of Economic Interests. This is administered very skillfully by our city clerk. You can actually file these through NetFile, right? So it's pretty convenient to do it. The time period is coming up, mine is due, I've got to get mine done and filed before April 1st. And know that, when you make these filings, they're available to the public, right? The whole idea of this is to make the public aware of interests that you have that may present conflicts of interest. So, certain folks in this group have to file these things, and all of that information is available to the public. There are certain disclosure categories that apply to employees. City clerk is, Nora, anyway, I bet our new elected city clerk knows this stuff, too, but Nora, in administering this, is very knowledgeable about this. And there are rules that, as part of administering this agreement, that are, go into the adoption of a conflict of interest code, you know, every year. So every year, Nora puts together, after analyzing the various positions, a categorization of the different employees and what their disclosure obligations are, and the city council approves this. Each designated employee within these categories must file the Form 700 that includes the disclosure categories that are associated with that position. And the city has adopted that recently in a resolution. Our local conflict of interest code must be amended when new positions are created or position responsibilities are changed, but at a minimum, I'm sorry, must be reviewed every two years. So, as part of this requirement, cities have to adopt a code, it's administered by the city clerk, there are certain categories that certain employees need to disclose on, and it is a transparency and conflict of interest identifier system. It depends upon your categories, as what you need to disclose, but typical disclosure areas include disclosure of income, except government income, of $500 or more, real property interests that you have, except your primary residence, valued at $2,000 or more, investments, stocks, bonds, other type of investments valued at $2,000 or more, business positions that you might have, loans that you might have, other than institutional loans, of 200, valued at 250 or more, gifts of $50 or more from a single source in a calendar year, travel payments and business entity ownership, 10% interest or greater. Okay, those are the typical kinds of things that need to be disclosed. The FPPC is pretty good about this, and for those of you that file Form 700s, the instructions are pretty detailed and are pretty decent. You can actually sort through most issues by self-helping on that. If it's unclear, when you look at it, consult with the city clerk and/or my office. We can share our thoughts with you and steer you in the right direction, but you're technically not our client in this context. You are kind of an individual person that has to be responsible for your own analysis and your own disclosures, but we want to be helpful, and we'll help steer you in the right direction. But recognize that, in the conflict of interest area or in the Form 700 area, advice or information that we give you, not advice, information that we give you does not immunize you from prosecution under the FPPC if you don't do something right. We're obviously wanting to, we want to give you the best possible information so that you do make a good decision, but you really need to kind of sort this out your own. There's really good resources also on the FPP website that's identified here. Some examples in this chart are useful of things that are reportable versus things that aren't. In the investment category, stocks, including those held by an IRA or 401K, that you can see in effect where the stocks are listed, those things must be reported. But insurance policies, government bonds, mutual funds, right, where you're buying into a pool of stocks where you don't know what your stocks are, it's just a type of stock or bond, you know, investment, those things don't need to be disclosed. Business entity interests that are listed here require disclosure. Apparently savings and checking accounts, cryptocurrency, if anybody has any, and annuities don't need to be disclosed. There's real property interests that must be disclosed. If you have real property that's within two miles of the jurisdiction of the city in which you work or you're elected, you have to disclose those interests as well. It's not just city property, it's property within two miles. But if it's your residence and you use it only as your personal residence, that's not something you need to disclose. If something is proposed near your residence, you still may have a conflict, but it's not something that you have to disclose for your Form 700. Most incomes need to be disclosed, but your actual government salary, if you're a government employee, doesn't need to be disclosed, that's not viewed as a disclosable interest. Gifts, most gifts need to be disclosed, but not gifts from family members, as we talked about, and then travel payments. So, our next question. Everybody ready? Got your sheets out? We're on question six. I'm thinking about half of you will get this. What city is this? What is this statue, statue affectionately known as? And then what is its real name? City, statue, real name, I got a knowing nod over here. You're not checking on your phone for the real name, though, are you?
You're supposed to show a picture of me standing in front of--
Oh, okay, that's, you can do that, but don't show the group, because that might have clues on it. All right, so we've got a ringer over here on this question. Okay. We've gotten a good ways into this. Luis now is going to, this is a pretty heavy lift, so thank you, Luis, for doing this. I took way too much time on this last time. Luis is going to be better than me, and we're going to get through Brown Act, which is very important and very interesting. Thank you, Luis.
Of course. When people think about local governments, typically what comes in mind are city council meetings, right, boards, commission meetings, the agendas, and in particular, right, the public commentators that come in and they're able to address directly the boards in front of them and give their opinion, right? And the law we're going to discuss right now kind of creates that system of interaction between the government and the people that we know of today. This is the Brown Act. It was authored by Ralph M. Brown, an assemblyman of Turlock, California. It was enacted by the California State Legislature in 1953 in an effort to safeguard the public's ability to obtain access to and participate in local government meetings and deliberations. It was originally a 686-word statute. Imagine that, that's kind of a two-page paper, double-spaced, and now it's a lot longer. It's now contained in California Government Code 54950 to 54963. Now, the core principles of the Brown Act. Local legislative bodies can only deliberate and take action at public meetings. The public must be notified in advance of all meetings and matters to be considered. The public must be given access to information and opportunity to provide input to decision-makers, and exceptions are limited. So right off the bat, what is a legislative body under the Brown Act? It applies to all legislative bodies and their members. It includes city councils and county boards, boards, commissions, and committees, subcommittees of the legislative body, with limited exceptions, we'll discuss those later on, regional boards such as the VTA and the NCPA, bids and peebids per Streets and Highway Code. It does not govern the conduct of city staff, however, city staff needs to be informed because they could inadvertently be an agent to a serial meeting. Now, what is a meeting? A meeting is any congregation of a majority of the members of a legislative body at the same time and place to hear, discuss, or deliberate an issue in the subject matter jurisdiction of the body. That's pretty broad, right? Discuss or deliberate, right? No action is actually required. Mere discussions qualify or could qualify as a meeting under the Brown Act. And it includes informal gatherings with or without public attendance or city sponsorship. In the same vein of what qualifies as a meeting, and this is where things get a little bit complicated, other forms of communication can constitute a meeting, such as written communications, like emails between a majority of members. It doesn't have to be just emails, it could be text messages, social media, right? In today's, in today's world, right, it's very, very relevant. A meeting could be by, through intermediary communications, that is, communications between employees or agents on behalf of a majority of members. It could be through a series of communications or a chain of communications between members resulting in a quorum of members contacted. This is the idea of a serial meeting or a seriate meeting, and I feel like these are best exemplified through some examples. So these are some examples of common serial meetings. On the left, we have the daisy chain, and that's an example where member A communicates with member B, who then communicates to member C. And on a five-person body, that's a majority, communicating amongst themselves, it's a Brown Act violation. This also reminds me a lot of that game telephone, right, where by the end of it, the original message is totally, is totally different. This kind of reminds me of that. And on the right, we have the hub-and-spoke serial meeting, and that's when a person acts as a hub of a wheel and communicates individually with the various spokes. For example, if a member A were to communicate with member C, and that member A then communicates with member C or D, that's also a serial meeting under the Brown Act. And important to note that anyone can be the hub in this example, doesn't necessarily have to be a member, it could be a member of the public, it could be staff, really anybody who's coordinating communication amongst a majority, that could qualify as a serial meeting. There are some meeting exceptions. Not every instance where a majority of members of a legislative body are physically present at the same time constitutes a meeting, these are the exceptions. Members can attend, a majority of members can attend in a conference that's open to the public, right? Often, members, city councils, boards, commissions go to league meetings, right? And they're there at the same time. That's not considered a meeting. Open and publicized meetings of local groups is not a meeting. Open notice meeting of another legislative body, that's also exempt. Social or ceremonial events, that's also exempt. Groundbreaking events, right? Open and notice meetings of a standing committee, that's also exempt. However, the key thing to note here, although this exemption allows a majority of members to be there at the same time and same place, right, they still can't talk business, right? That's still prohibited, as best practice is, just don't do it. There's some more exceptions here. Memorandum from the city manager or city attorney to all city council members, that's permissible, however, of course, the members can't then discuss the contents amongst themselves. Communications for purposes of calling a special meeting or setting an agenda, that's also exempt. Individual contacts or conversations between less than a majority of members and the members of the public, that's also exempt. We have some Brown Act practice tips. Council members and board members, when talking to a colleague about city business, check first to see who they've spoken with. Beware of intermediary communications between employees or agents on behalf of a majority of members. Staff members should exercise care not to disclose members' views and positions to other members. If staff needs to communicate with members by email, it is a good practice to BCC the members so that a member doesn't inadvertently violate the Brown Act by replying all to that communication.
Okay, good, we made it to question number seven, iconic city moments and places. Truly iconic, maybe the most iconic of all of our questions. I'm expecting some very high-quality responses to this particular question. So, first of all, what city is this? Two points. One point apiece, what buildings are these? And then one point apiece, what years were these buildings built? Within five years. Within five years. What years were these buildings built? Within five years. Some of the historical landspeople here might be aces in the hole on this one. might be aces in the hole on this one. Very good. Louise, Brown Act. More Brown Act, more cowbell.
Our next topic on the Brown Act is meeting agendas. So, once it's determined that there's a meeting, right? The next step is to put together an agenda. And the purpose of the agenda is to inform the public what will be discussed at the meeting so they can determine whether to monitor or participate in the meeting. These are the agenda requirements in terms of notice. The agenda must be posted in advance of the meeting. 72 hours for a regular meeting, 24 hours for a special meeting. The agenda must be posted. Usually, it's posted outside of council chambers and mailed to those who are requesting the agenda. And it also must be posted prominently on the internet and made searchable. The agenda is required to have particular content. It must indicate location and time. Must contain a description of items to be discussed. And the Brown Act requires that the agenda titles fully describe the issue or action to be discussed or for there to be action. The title generally does not need to be longer than 20 words. However, it should be clear to a member of the public what will be discussed and what is sought regarding the item, right? Is the item, is it an approval item? Is it direction? Is it acceptance? And here we have an example, or two examples of agenda titles, right? So, here's the first one, and we'll see if this one's sufficient. Discuss downtown precise plan. Could use some work, right? It's kind of short in length. But, right, what is the action, right? Is there action proposed, right? Is this merely an informational matter? What is the action? So, we have another... We have the better example on the right. Presentation of and possible action on downtown precise plan to change land uses and development standards in area boarded by Benton, Lafayette, Madison, and Homestead. It's a lot better, right? Indicates that there's possible action forthcoming, that there'll be a presentation, and describes the parameters of what the action will be.
Last year, we had the same example. I had Fenton instead of Benton, and people went crazy.
I fix it for you, Glenn. Don't worry. And we have another example here, right? Fiscal year 2324 budget amendments, right? Same issue. What is it talking about? Is there action proposed? What about the budget amendment? What's the purpose of this, right? And so, on the right, we have action on proposed amendments for the fiscal year 2324 budget to increase the city attorney's budget by $2 million.
I will say, this was also on last year's, but last year I asked for $3 million, so I think I'm being fiscally responsible.
All right, what can you talk about at meetings? Only items listed and clearly described on a timely posted agenda can be discussed or acted upon, right? And this is for a very important reason. The public needs notice, right? They need to know... They need to have sufficient information to know whether they want to show up and participate in that government process, right? If a question about adequacy of description... If there is any question about the adequacy of descriptions, better not act, right? The best practice here is to continue the item so that the title can be remedied. What you cannot talk about at meetings: Cannot consider, discuss, deliberate, or act on matters not on the agenda. Otherwise, it's only appropriate to take action... The only appropriate action is to refer the item to staff for future consideration on a future agenda. Brief responses and questions are okay, right? Sometimes, right? In the course of conducting government business, questions arise. There's a need to make brief comments, right? The Brown Act allows for that. But it must be brief, right? And there's no formula to this. Sometimes, you'll maybe see city attorneys kind of nod or physically indicating that it's time to wrap things up. But yes, it must be brief. There are limited exceptions to this. In emergency situations, a majority of the body can vote to determine whether an emergency exists. And this typically, natural disasters, terrorist acts, major work stoppage, in that event, perhaps add an item to the agenda. There's also the limited exception of an urgency. Two-thirds vote can determine the need to take immediate action, that the need for immediate action exists, and the agency knowledge of those arose after the agenda was posted. Very briefly, on this slide, meetings must be held at qualified locations. Typically, it needs to be held in the boundaries of the city, right? There are a few exceptions. I will not list them per the city attorney's suggestion. But important to note, the location must be ADA accessible, and there's some rules on remote participation, which we will discuss in the next slide. So, in certain situations, a member of a legislative body can participate remotely. One way for a member to participate remotely is through the traditional rule, right? This existed before COVID, still exists today. Under the traditional rule, a member can participate remotely if the place from which they are participating is included on the agenda. The member posts the agenda outside the room where they'll be participating from, and members of the public have access to that room in order to make a public comment. That's the traditional rule. COVID kind of changed things, right? Because there was a need to participate remotely. The governor took action through executive order and allowed local legislative bodies to hold meetings remotely. Once those emergency conditions subsided, the legislator took action and allowed for some rules for teleconference meetings. And that's in AB 2303. Long-term permission to hold hybrid meetings are allowed in specified circumstances. Typically, if a member has an emergency situation or if there's other just cause. Emergency typically means physical illness or contagious illness. Just cause is a little bit more broad and includes caregiving and things of that nature. If you're availing yourself to this law, you should know that there's a restriction on the number of times you can attend remotely. It's typically based on the number of times the body meets monthly. A quorum of the body still must be in person. Two-way audiovisual or two-way phone and live webcasting is required. And importantly, all votes taken during a teleconference meeting must be by rook. And we have some rules in regards to subcommittees. The Brown Act generally applies to all boards, commissions, committees, subcommittees, and other bodies created by charter, resolution, or formal action of the legislative body. This typically applies whether the body is permanent or temporary, advisory or decision-making. Although, there's a limited exception for ad hoc subcommittees, and that's defined here. An ad hoc subcommittee is one comprised solely of less than a quorum of members of the appointing body, does not have continuing jurisdiction over a particular subject matter, cannot have members of other legislative bodies or other third parties, and it's limited in duration, ideally six months or less. And so, these subcommittees typically serve a very specific purpose, right? They're put together to accomplish some specific goal, perhaps to draft a report for consideration for the body as a whole, right? And the idea is, upon conclusion of that thing, the subcommittee is disbanded. Staff-created citizen business committees are also exempt. An example of this is the chief's advisory board. That could be included in this. There are many gray areas. Again, as the theme of the evening, seek city attorney advice when needed. In some situations, a legislative body can meet in private through a closed session, right? This can only occur in very, very limited circumstances. And for our purposes, only the city council, with a few other exceptions, meet in closed session. And the idea here is, typically, we don't want to disseminate certain things of sensitive nature to the public. For example, if we're discussing existing litigation or anticipated litigation, right? Probably not a good idea to discuss in public litigation strategy and things of that nature. So, the government code allows legislative bodies to meet in closed session under particular circumstances. And if you do meet in closed session, you should know that there's some confidentiality rules that apply. Confidential information obtained during closed session cannot be disclosed outside of the session. And that includes city negotiating positions and real estate labor talks and city vulnerabilities or settlement positions in litigation. That confidentiality can be waived, but only by majority vote of the legislative body. If there's some kind of unauthorized disclosure, that can come with some pretty severe penalties. And interestingly, sometimes you'll see Glenn do this, right? But after a closed session, there's an obligation to report out, right? And in instances where there's a final decision, we must include the substance of that decision.
Okay, we made it to iconic city moment and place. Question number eight. This one will be hard, I think. But this is where the person who's going to win the valuable prizes tonight will distinguish themselves. What city is this? And who is this artist? City and artist. City's worth two, artist is worth two. Some bonus points for the artist. I'm thinking this is maybe a 2% question, 5% question of people. I don't see very... Do the best you can, and we will disclose it at the end. Louise, rights of the public.
Under the Brown Act, of course, the core concept is the rights of the public. Sometimes, we ask for that information, right? But under the Brown Act, it can't be required. Record the meeting with audio or visual... Audio or video and take pictures. Review agendas and other documents attributed to majority of the board. If requested in writing, have the agenda or agenda-related documents be mailed to them. Obtain a copy of an audio or video of the meeting. Criticize or complain about the legislative body, members of the legislative body, or city actions, processes, or procedures. Limits to this do apply, particularly in the event of where there's an actual disruption of a meeting. But in general, a lot of what's said in meetings are protected by the First Amendment, and that must be respected. The public has the ability to provide their public comment. In a regular meeting, comment must be allowed. Reasonable time limits can be adopted by a local agency. Currently, the city council time limit is two minutes. On non-agenda items, the public must have an opportunity to address the board in public, right? This is typically done in Santa Clara under public presentations. Some rules apply as it relates to matters mentioned in public presentations. No action or discussion can occur. You can refer to staff for information, request a report back, request an item be placed on a future agenda. Now, the current time limit for non-agendized items is three minutes for the city council. For special meetings, you must allow comment on agenda items. Comment on non-agenda items is permissible, but not required. And you should know there's a special rule for non-English speakers. As of January 1st, 2017, AB 1787 now requires twice the allotted time be provided for translation for non-English speakers unless simultaneous translation equipment is available. Social media risks. In today's world, right? We, at least most of us, use social media, right? And this came with some interesting implications with regard to how the Brown Act supplied, right? It could increase the risk of serial meetings, increase the risk of bias, predetermination, and due process violations. Emails, texts, tweets, or posts during meetings can deny public access to the decision-making process. And for a long time, we knew the Brown Act applied, but there was no law or case law to really address or clarify how and when. But now, we have AB 992, which was approved by Governor Newsom on September 18, 2020, which amended the Brown Act to address this specific social media concern. And it provides the first statutory guidance in a challenging and evolving area. So, under this rule, a public official may communicate on social media to answer questions, provide information to the public, provide information to the public, or solicit information from the public regarding a matter within the legislative body's subject matter jurisdiction, right? So, you can't provide how you're going to vote on a particular matter, right? You can maybe use it for informational purposes, right? To give information or to receive information. A public official may not use any social media platform to discuss amongst themselves official business or respond directly to any communication on social media regarding a matter that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body that is made, posted, or shared by another member of the legislative body. Acting with another member's posts in any way. That includes liking, sharing, or posting on another member's posts, right? This is a bright-line rule. Typically, we don't get those too much in the law.
And all of this, just to note, and a couple of these things, just to be clear, when it relates to city business, right? All these communications are related to city business. You can follow each other. You can like a person's trip or, you know, pick her up their grandkid. But if you're communicating with people on social media with respect to city business, there's a bright-line rule about that, and it should not be done.
Thank you, Glenn. The legislator did provide a definition for what qualifies as a social media platform, and that's described here. But in general, right, it includes all of what we consider social media, right? We have some images here. Reddit, Snapchat, Instagram, Facebook, TikTok, X, really any publicly available platform where people can exchange ideas would probably be considered a social media platform. And here we have some examples of what might be a good post that's permissible and a not-so-good post. So, an example of a good post, "City Council Will Consider Silicon Valley Power Rate Adjustments At Our January 9 Meeting. Please Come and Share Your Views." Right? That's pretty good. It's informational in nature. No problem with that. Not so good. "Eartha B. Damned—damned? I don't know." Wants a city permit to build a peaker plant in her parking lot on Franklin Avenue to power her tanning bed salon. Pretty crispy. Outrageous. Please join me in the council majority in opposing her project at our January 9 meeting." So, that's a little bit different, right? It's expressing an opinion, an action she might take, but also kind of alludes to maybe she was engaged in some serial meetings there or some outright prohibited meetings with other council members, right? So, that's an example of something not to do. We have a slide here on social media and the First Amendment. So, this is not really a Brown Act issue so much as it is a constitutional First Amendment kind of thing. A public official may violate the constituents' First Amendment right by blocking certain constituents' comments on a public social media page that is related to the official's duties, right? So, that's a question. When is the use of a social media platform considered part of the official's duties? And the second bullet point describes that. If a public official has a public social media page that is used to communicate with the public or inform constituents about information related to the jurisdiction, the public social media page is related to the official's business. And that includes all comments and non-verbal reactions, likes, for example. They either need to be allowed or universally disabled. And of course, any kind of violation of the Brown Act could accompany some different kinds of consequences. There could be civil remedies that can be brought by an interested person or the DA. And the consequence of that could be an invalidation action to void past acts. It could also include injunctive or declaratory relief to prevent future violations. Procedural requirements to allow opportunity to cure and correct the action can be taken. And these actions, civil actions, for violations of the Brown Act, costs and attorney fees could be awarded against the agency. Could also accompany severe criminal penalties, right? In particular, when there's an intent to deprive the public of information. And of course, it could also lead to the loss of public trust. We have some Brown Act practice tips. Avoid sharing info about another council committee, commission, member's views. Do not direct or CC emails to a quorum of more, to a quorum or more of your council board or colleagues, or reply all on city business. Refrain from public statements, including use of social media, that state final positions on matters pending before you. Review agendas in advance of meeting and think about Brown Act parameters. Don't discuss items not on the agenda. Instead, refer them to staff or future discussions with consensus of your board. Don't forget to allow public input and apply rules even handedly. Don't go into closed session without the advice and presence of a city attorney. When in doubt, don't act. If unclear, seek advice from the city attorney's office in advance whenever possible. Avoid interactions and advocacy on social media on pending actions before your board.
Very good. Thanks, Louise. I think I'll take this moment, and then I'll try to crank us through because we've still got some stuff we need to talk about. I'm interested to see how people do on this one. If you are in City Hall and use the men's restroom, you have a distinct advantage on this picture. It is hanging in the men's restroom. So, I'm gonna, I'm maybe only gonna give one point, or if the men get this correct, they get one point. If the women get it correct, they get two points. Is that wrong, Member Hardy? Yeah, I think I'm violating all sorts of rules. My staff is cringing in the back with it. So, we won't do that. We'll do even— What city is this? What building is being constructed? And what is the approximate year of the photo within five years? I think I'm being very generous with that, certainly to anyone who's been in the men's restroom. Public Records Act. A lot of you are familiar with this. It's in the government code. Like the Brown Act was about meeting and decision transparency, the Public Records Act is really about document and records transparency. There's a lot of rules. Sometimes they're clear, sometimes less so in their application, like most rules that come out of Sacramento. And there's a lot of balancing factors that you need to sort through in order to get to the right answer. The essence of this, though, the core principles of the Public Records Act is, the public has the right to see records related to the conduct of public business, right? You get to attend meetings. You get to participate in meetings. You also get to have access to the records, so you see what's going on. The government is obligated to maintain and be prepared to provide public records in a timely manner, and what constitutes a public record is broadly defined. What is a public record, right? We usually start out with the definitions. It's defined in some specific statutes and also in city business practices and policies as to what actually constitutes a public record. In the absence of a specific legal definition, a record is the document or information generated as the final output of a business process or business decision, right? It's not everything. It's a broad definition, but it's really the final document more often than not. Or certain communications that might lead, you know, to a final decision. A record can be in any format, either physical or electronic, and it needs to be retained in accordance with the city's record retention schedule. If it's not something that the city retains, it may not be, it may be considered a transitory record and not a public record, but it doesn't need to be an actual physical piece of paper. It could be an email. It could be a spreadsheet. It can be any number of different digital, you know, forms of communication. It can be a photograph. City business conducted on private devices or accounts, and this is really important. San Jose's case, I think, came out in 2017. Before that, if you conducted business on your personal device, it was not considered a public record. It was a personal record. It was on your personal device. San Jose case said right up here, no. If you conduct city business on a private device and it is otherwise a public record, that is something that needs to be turned over. So, what is not a public record? There are exceptions to this. Not all information is public or disclosable. These exemptions will mostly make sense, I think, to a lot of you. Private information about individuals, like a social security number, right? Tax information, things that might identify them, medical information. Personnel information about employee, right? Someone's personnel file, records of discipline or other types of personnel information is not disclosable. Giraffes or working copies or transitory documents or notes, right? If I'm taking notes about something and putting information together, aside from the fact that I'm attorney and that would be attorney work product, if some other staff person is doing that, those things aren't public records. It's part of them, you know, doing their job and assembling their thoughts if it's a transitory record. Details about security or critical infrastructure, right? A lot of times, we've got records about safety and security at any number of city facilities, including Levi's Stadium. That's not turned over because it could create risk and security problems. Deliberate process records may also be exempt. If people are interacting internally, trying to reach a decision, that can be an exempt record because it's not the decision itself. Sometimes we get trade, secrets, and proprietary information from third parties, business plans, financial records. And then there's a general kind of balancing of interests that might apply and protect a record where you're balancing the competing interests and the public's benefit of disclosure and the needs for privacy or keeping that information and not, you know, not public. And I think we'll have an example of this in one of our scenarios. One of the things that absolutely required is responsiveness. A response, not necessarily the record itself, because sometimes it takes a while to put records together, must be provided within 10 days of the request. Additional time may be allowed in certain circumstances. Sometimes a request requires some interaction with the person asking for the information to narrow their request or really understand what they're getting at. People don't know what the terms are at times. There are also additional duties on the part of the public agency to provide the record more quickly if you can, help them form an effective request, explain why records are withheld. There are reasons why you might not provide something. You're supposed to tell the person when you respond to them, "I'm not providing you something, but I'm not telling you why." You can't do that. You have to explain why. You can charge fees for copying things, but you can't charge staff time unless you're actually recreating a record that you tell the person, "Hey, I don't have this record, but I'm willing to create it for you." You can charge them for that. People who work on this, including people in my group, really do a great job in the city. We've got a very high volume here. I think a lot of places are getting increasing amount of public records, so it's hard to keep up with it. And we've really got a lot of work to do to get better at this, both to be more efficient with less staff time and more responsive. We're in the middle of a process improvement analysis now to see how we go about doing this, to see if there's AI or other applications that might make this more efficient. But no matter what, people are entitled to records, and we need to be equipped to respond to those, you know, requests. But higher than regular volume here in Santa Clara, for sure. So, practice tips. If you're a person who is in this environment as an employee, as a member of a board or commission, as an elected official, you need to be prepared to promptly disclose records if they're requested of you. We'll usually coordinate that, and we'll send requests out for you. We can search records through IT that are on city, you know, devices are electronically available, but you need to search your own personal records if you have that, that's related to city business. You should communicate carefully, especially in emails, understanding that emails are public records and might be disclosed. You need to search every place a record is reasonably likely to be located. You should document a search. How you go about doing that may become an issue. Did you make reasonable efforts to actually try to find the record? And then absolutely, it is best not to use private records, accounts, or devices to conduct city business, right? It is very challenging for us to screen that. In fact, there's a city policy that discourages that. If you do so and conduct on city business, those records must be kept, and they must ultimately be disclosed. So, avoid using private devices, and if you use them, it's better to actually transfer whatever record you might have on your private device to a public, you know, city device so that it can be searched and provided on your behalf. So, PRA tips. There is a local rule we've actually got, as a lot of you are familiar with, as applies to city manager, city attorney, assistant deputy city managers, department heads, and designated managers, and elected officials, senior staff, right? We have to actually keep our calendars, and we have to make them available to the public on a monthly basis. All non internal city-related appointments, right? When we're meeting with outside person. For meeting with inside people, that's not covered by this public calendars ordinance, but we have to make a monthly disclosure of who all we're meeting with, with at least some statement about what the meeting was about. And this information is gathered monthly, and it's posted on the city's website. Okay, we're to some hypothetical scenarios. And we might not be able to do all of these because we ran out of time last time, too, huh? But let's do the first one. Olden Gray, Santa Clara's senior councilperson, owns stock in a company that operates a high-end workout center for active seniors, Brandon Stretcher Dye. There are over 55 Stretcher Dye franchises throughout the country. Sorry. Throughout the country, yes. But the closest is in San Bruno. Olden's stock reached a value of $2,500 during the reporting period. Does Olden need to report his Stretcher Dye stock on his Form 700? Green is for—red is no, he doesn't have to report it, and green is for yes, does have to report it. Green says yes. Who wants to speak for green? Who speaks for the trees? Yes, sir. Yes. You can decline.
Well, yeah.
And then Kelly will answer.
It's over, yeah. It has to be—I used to be a city employer, remember? I had to put everything in.
Yeah.
I can't remember the minimums. I think you went over it earlier. But yeah, it seems like a lot, and it should be reported.
Yeah. Anyone want to take issue with that? Jonathan? Right, do you remember?
The business is not within the limits of the—
The business is not in Santa Clara. Now, there's some interesting facts here, right? They've got them all over the country. They may be interested in expanding into Santa Clara, but at this point, it's in San Bruno. That's more than two, you know, miles away, right? It's outside the city's jurisdiction, arguably, although I always like people airing on the side of yes, you know? But arguably, this is not something that needs to be disclosed. Yeah, the dollar amount is adequate, right? But it's not a business that's operating within Santa Clara currently. If this business opened up a branch in Santa Clara, that would immediately become something they have to disclose.
Use the mic.
It's stock. Stock interest is different. It wouldn't be income. It's a stock interest. Yeah. Okay, yeah. Have you made enough trouble? Okay, we'll keep going. Okay, this next one. Which one should we do? Let's skip to number three. Question number three. At a regular meeting of the city council during council comments, council member High Stakes proposes amendments to the city code to allow for sports bars with NFL betting parlors. Council member Moral Outrage declares the proposal repugnant, but council member Compromise convinces a majority of the group to form an ad hoc subcommittee to study the idea further and report back to council. Has the council violated the Brown Act? Red, no. Green for yes. Has the council violated the Brown Act? Red, no. Green for yes. I've got a no back there. Yes, sir. Why haven't they violated the Brown Act? Red is for no, they haven't. Did you think green, okay? Do we have a red? I know, sometimes I'm tricky. Do we have a red? Here's a red. Give it to me.
Well, they didn't make a decision, they didn't take action, and they agreed to form a subcommittee. So, all of those are things that are dictated within the Brown Act.
Yeah, so that could be, those could be factors, but remember, you don't need to make a decision, right, in order to have something covered by, required to be done in an appropriate meeting, right, with an agendized item? So, what's the key fact, what's the key fact in this that makes the better answer yes? Yes, sir. Yes, get back. Get back, I mean.
It convinces a majority of the group. That's the problem, is the majority. You could have a smaller than a majority to meet as a subcommittee, but not a majority.
Okay, so we're currently acting, if they, did they violate the Brown Act, right, in the first place? What's the fact that I'm missing here? Councilmember Hardy.
I don't think it was on the agenda.
That is the key thing, right? Do you remember this key fact? It's at a regular meeting, right? So, they have a meeting, they're all there during council comments, right? They brought this up. This is not an agendized item. They are not supposed to form, they're not supposed to take any definitive action to form an ad hoc. Now, could they refer this item to staff and go, "Staff, we want to look at this issue and bring it back or put it on an agenda. We may want to form an ad hoc subcommittee about this." They could totally do that. But they went ahead when it wasn't on the agenda, and they took an action. That's really the key thing here. Are there any other issues that strike you here that are of concern? Convinces a majority of the group to form an ad hoc subcommittee. So, that's very good. So, if in fact the committee was going to be a majority, right, you can't have a, you can't have that, right? That couldn't be an ad hoc subcommittee. The thing I think we're getting here was that majority actually decides to vote to form the ad hoc committee, not necessarily that there's a majority on it. But you're absolutely right. If there's a majority on it, right, that would be a problem, all right? That's not a true ad hoc subcommittee. Any other issues with this? Called the issue repugnant, right? Is that consistent with our values and how one should be talking about things? That's pretty strong language. And also, that sure sounds like potentially not only a violation of the city's code of civil discourse, but also due process, right? It's not really, are you really studying it when you call it repugnant? Are you really going through the process of evaluating whether it's a good idea or not? It sounds like you already made it, decided on it. So, yes, Andy.
The question I have is, since it was already on the agenda to look at proposed amendments, couldn't one of those actions be to put a committee together as part of the agenda item?
So, if it was on the agenda, right, if it was properly—this one wasn't agendized. During council comments, they brought it up. It's not agendized.
Oh, my fault.
Yeah, council comments. But you're absolutely right. If this item was on the agenda and they wanted to form an ad hoc subcommittee, I'd probably let them do that, right? Because it's, the formation of an ad hoc subcommittee is related to the item. That's a reasonable item. Ideally, I would have had the item describing that, consider possible actions, including committee formation on the agenda, have it fully described. But I would probably let them form an ad hoc subcommittee if it was properly agendized. So, tricky question. Okay. Question four. In the city of Tumult, Parks and Rec Commissioner Ken Census wants to conduct a team-building session to improve relations among its members. Nice idea. And develop a common vision on how to handle confidential ethics complaints filed anonymously with a request for confidentiality. Seems well-intentioned. He sends an email to all other members in— He sends an email to all other members inquiring as to their availability. Four of seven members respond, including possible dates of availability. Okay, there's a lot here. I'm going to parse it. Has the Brown Act been violated? Red for no, green for yes. Red for no, no violation. Green for yes. Green, why do we think green? Why do we think green? Why is this, it's okay, yeah? Why is this okay?
It's violated.
I'm sorry. Has the Brown, has the Brown Act, I tricked myself with my questions. Has the Brown Act been violated? Red for no, green for yes.
Super violated.
So green for yes, right? You said yes, the Brown Act's been violated. I think I said that, or did I not? Okay, green for yes. Why has the Brown Act been violated?
Because it was the email to like the other commissioners and it's not like, it's not a communication from staff, it's not publicly discussed on how to get the availability and stuff like that.
So you're getting at a good point. These types of communications actually should be run through staff, right, in order to avoid the potential that a reply all becomes an inadvertent meeting. So the best practice is to have these types of communications come through staff. But what did they do with this meeting? He's just trying to schedule a meeting, right? Under the Brown Act, there's actually a specific exemption if you're just trying to schedule the meeting. So you could argue in this case, as long as they weren't deliberating on the substance of this issue, if you sent out an email and you're trying to schedule a meeting, you can actually do that under the Brown Act. So a little tricky, but you're spot on. It's a high-risk communication that we say, "Don't do, don't reply all." And even if you're technically, you know, compliant, you're better off running this stuff through staff because we can make sure that it's an appropriate communication and it's not an inadvertent deliberation. Okay, may this meeting be conducted in closed session? This nice idea of Ken Census? Can we talk about this in closed session? Red for no, green for yes. Is this an appropriate closed-session discussion? Red for no, green for yes. Yes, District One.
It's not a negotiated, is it? So I don't see how it would be, this is more process that you, I think you were conducting an open.
Yeah, this is really not one of the things that's listed under the, under the list of what's an exempt, keeping things confidential, but more importantly, what the heck is Parks and Rec doing, having a closed session to talk about ethics, you know, complaints, right? Sorry, no offense. Parks and Rec does great stuff, but remember what I said? In terms of best practice, there really almost is almost no circumstance that a non-city council, sometimes civil service, but that a non-city council group should go into closed session, not even Parks and Rec, which we love and is exalted. And, you know, and the other issue this raises is, is this really within their jurisdiction, right? If there's an individual person on Parks and Rec who thought this was an issue and wanted to bring it up, it's probably not a Parks and Rec thing that individual person could go, "Hey, I'm interested about this. I'm going to go to city council meeting, I'm going to go to them in public comment and I'm going to go, you know what? We should really do something like this and I think this is a good idea." So there's a lot, there's a lot going on in here, but not a good idea for almost anybody other than city council to go into closed session. Okay, we're going to do one, last one, and then we're going to super jam through the Five. The city of Big Time owns and operates a small but busy airport. People who are unhappy with the noise from the airport file noise complaints. The airport seeks to expand, sorry, the airport seeks to expand operations. A resident who supports the expansion files a Public Records Act request, asking for copies of all complaints, including the names and addresses of those that complained. The city denies the request, right? So it's an airport, person's unhappy, files noise complaints, airport wants to expand operations, a resident who supports the expansion doesn't like the person who's complained about it, wants a PRA request, doesn't, I take it back, they don't even know the person that hasn't complained about it. They file a Public Records Act request for copies of all complaints, including the names and addresses. Did the city act properly under the PRA by denying this request? Red for no, they acted improperly. Green for yes, they were good. Red for no, green for yes. Who says no? Who hasn't spoken? Who wants to speak? Who said no? Or you can speak again. Why no?
So I think that they should be complying with the request, but with the caveat that the, the personal information be redacted.
Yeah, very, very, very good. That's very good. So a lot of the, and that gets at an issue that says a lot of these, there's no absolute disclosure or nondisclosure, right? A lot of things that people ask for are appropriate to disclose, but you redact things within it. In this case, I actually think the better answer is, yes, they did comply without responding it because there's an interest in the balancing test, sorry, of how you'd apply, in not having a chilling effect on people who file complaints about things. And if there was an ongoing investigation, or even if there wasn't, with respect to this noise complaint, the identity of that person who filed the complaint would probably be protected under the balancing test, right? So if the investigation was completed, you could balance it differently and say, "I'm going to protect the identity of that person and I'm going to provide all of the information and I'm going to redact, you know, their information." But if the information, if there was an investigation ongoing regarding their complaint, we probably wouldn't provide any of it. So that's one of those in-between ones. You hit on the right, you hit on the right issue, though.
Quick question. You wouldn't even provide the complaints?
I'm sorry?
The complaints are public records and the FAA holds those records and the FAA can release those records.
Oh, that's a different thing. So under the FAA, I'm applying the city rules, so they apply that, they complain to us, not to the FAA.
That's right there, what you did without knowing is what Palo Alto Airport is going to.
But Palo Alto, but...
Palo Alto has to release their airplane directly to the city or to the FAA by the end number of their airplanes. Palo Alto will have the end number of the airplane by the time they're recording because they have all the different numbers.
Oh, very interesting. Very interesting. Okay, we're going to report back out on that. That'll be on our FAQs, because I've learned something about that. That is a unique, that's a unique situation. Not agreeing with you that you're right, but it sounds like you have good information. Because I refuse to agree with you. Okay, very good. We're on to our final question. This one a little easier than the last couple. Question number 10. What city is this? What famous speech is being given? And what year? You have to be exact with the year. I'm sorry, you have to be exact. City, we're two points. Famous speech worth one. What year worth one? Okay, we're going to jam, super jam through these last few things because I know we've gone over a little bit. And I'm gonna, I may do it all, Louis, just to crank. Okay, we've talked about a lot of different kinds of common law, conflict of interest issues, but not this one, not common law bias. Common law is established by judicial rulings as opposed to statutes, and it prohibits actions or involvement by public officials in a matter where there is a high likelihood that their personal interests could be placed above their duty of loyalty to the public, right? So they don't necessarily violate any of the statutory conflict of interest laws, but under these circumstances, there's a high likelihood, likelihood that their personal interests could be placed above their duty of loyalty to the public, right? The exact kind of thing we're supposed to be doing in evaluating how we conduct ourselves. Typical personal interests that might fall within this include financial interests that may or may not be covered by the PRA, or the material involvement of or a potential impact upon a close family member, close friend, or an affiliated group. For example, planning commissioner's daughter is seeking a conditionally used permit for a new car wash business. The daughter is grown, not a dependent, right? So she's not, it's not a financial conflict of interest, and the planning commissioner has no financial interest in the business. The planning commissioner should still recuse herself, right? It's their daughter with a business that's seeking approval in front of the planning commissioner. That's too close of a relationship. That, that is almost certainly going to create at a minimum an appearance of impropriety, but probably a common law biased issue too, where a recusal would be mandated. Common law bias has a couple of components to the analysis. It's both subjective and objective. What do you think and feel about the potential for divided loyalty? What might be, what might a reasonable observer think? You'll see that concept again when we talk about appearance of impropriety. Factors to consider is how material is the interest, how close is the relation, and again, appearance of impropriety. Let's talk about appearance of impropriety. To preserve the public's confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the conduct of city business, public officials, it is said, should avoid even the appearance of impropriety. Right, at the same time, there's a competing interest in this. You've been elected or appointed to make decisions on behalf of your constituents. And if you feel like you're not being influenced by a personal interest, why should you remove yourself from that duty, right? There's conflicting interests here. You were elected to serve. You don't think you're going to be influenced? You know, this is not, I can, I can separate myself from that. I'm going to, I'm going to participate in this decision. If no actual rule prohibits your participation, your challenge is to balance these interests. But here's the thing, if your participation will create a reasonable perception, not your own feeling, right? Your own feeling matters, you should think about that, but if it would create a reasonable perception that your ability to carry out your official duties with integrity, impartiality, and competency is impaired, you should not participate. So this is one of those things where you have to think about, how is this going to look, right? Should I really do this? Is this really so important to my duty to equip myself and fulfill my responsibilities that I should risk a community perception, you know, that I've acted improperly? That's the concept of appearance of impropriety. We're going to talk very quickly about due process rights. It's a concept that originates in the U.S. Constitution. Nobody should deprive anybody of life, liberty, pursuit, or property without due process of law. I almost got pursuit of happiness in there, also true. In practice, people seeking government permits or approvals to government action against their, or who are objecting to government action against their rights or property are entitled to notice, right? An opportunity to be heard, and a fair and impartial decision-maker, right? When government acts with respect to people's individual rights, they're entitled to due process. They should have notice of what's going to happen to them, they should get an opportunity to be heard, and they should be entitled to a fair and impartial decision-maker. This comes up a lot, both at the planning commission and at city council when you're making what are considered to be quasi-judicial determinations. This involves, again, pretty much only city council or planning commission as kind of a trial of fact. You're applying a set of rules to a particular proposal or situation. Examples included administrative hearing, an appeal of a code enforcement case, or planning commission or city council denial of a permit. The city satisfies its notice and opportunity to be heard requirements through various provisions of our code, right, which entitle people to notice. And there's other requirements of common law to ensure impartial and fair decisions are made. We've seen this a couple of times and I've objected to it in our fact scenario. Decision-makers should not advocate for or express a position prior to the hearing, right? If someone has a public hearing about whether or not the city should grant them something or not, you should not declare or act in any way that suggests you've already decided before they actually get that hearing and you hear all the information. You're only, in that case, you're only supposed to make your decisions based on evidence and the record, and ideally, you're supposed to disclose ex-party communications, things you've heard or observed outside that public hearing, you should put on the record. All of that is intended to create, give somebody due process. The other requirements throughout our code. Competitive bidding requirements, please, I'm just going to crank these. Most state and local governments require some level of competitive bidding. We're no different here. The idea, of course, is to get the best possible contracts and business for the city. And by doing this, you widely publicize the contract opportunity, you provide the same information to everybody, and then you apply your evaluation criteria consistently, right? You're supposed to be fair about this. It's a fairness concept and it's the idea of getting the city the best possible interest. Under our charter, public work contracts go to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and the city has contracting rules as well. There are circumstances where there's an emergency and there's an appropriate motion by the council, or there's some circumstances where a sole source or some alternative bidding process might make more sense under the circumstances. As long as you make an appropriate finding about that, that's allowed as well. But generally, the rule for public agencies is you're supposed to put things out to competitive bid, right? You're supposed to avoid potentially giving things to people who are favored, right, who aren't going through a fair and appropriate process. And we've got here some of the other exceptions for that, emergency purchases, public agency purposes, purchases, sometimes we do cooperative purchases, and then sole source, if the thing is so unique, it could only be required from one place. There's rules regarding incompatible offices in Code Section 1099. The analysis is here, please refer to this when you look at your materials. There's an analysis that's a legal analysis that would be done by my office if this was necessary. There's also incompatible activities, concept that if you're doing government work, you should not be engaged in other kinds of work that conflict with that, either given the nature of the work that you're doing or distracting you too much, you know, from what you're doing. So there are certain compatible, or outside activities that would be allowed, but other things are not. And so the rules about how that would work are set forth here. Nepotism is prohibited, right? It's a form of common law bias. If you've got, if you're giving somebody, something to somebody because there are a relation that's clearly not fair and ethical practice, that's prohibited both under our city charter and under a local rule, a city manager's directive 33. You're not allowed to just give, you know, jobs away to people who are relatives. Closing remarks. Sorry, we had to go fast in the end there. If I were to boil all this down, I would boil it down like this, with this slide. In all of your activities, be you a elected city councilperson, elected clerk, police chief, appointed member of a board or commission, city employee engaged in the conduct of city business, in all instances, you should be putting the public interest above your own. You should obtain no personal gain from your position, right? You can get paid, of course, right? Receive your stipend, you know, you see what you're entitled to, but you're not supposed to be in this for personal gains, so be aware of that. You're supposed to treat people fairly, right? Due process, equal opportunities, not discriminatory treatment, both under applicable laws and under the Santa Clara Code of Ethics and Values. And because a lot of these particular circumstances are complicated, you should seek legal advice. If it's an issue that relates to airport complaints at the Palo Alto Airport, you should consult with Mario. On all other matters, I would recommend you support, you consult with another qualified legal professional. Our office likes to make itself available to you, but it may need to be your personal lawyer. There's a bunch of information and resources on this, aside from this, I hope useful guide for you. I gave you the link earlier. Here is it again for the Santa Clara Ethics Program and Values. That's under review right now, and it may end up being updated. Also under review is consideration of whether or not to have an ethics board or commission or some other form of oversight of the administration of our ethics program. All that stuff's in the works, but in the meantime, that's where you find the Santa Clara Ethics Program. Council policies are found at that link. City manager directives, I don't think are publicly available, they apply to all the employees, though. And then really good resources under the Brown Act. Here's links. And contact the city attorney or the city clerk if you have questions about that. Political Reform Act also has good resources at PPC website, Attorney General, Institute for Local Government is also a really good source of information. We're at the end of the training part of this presentation. So I'll take a breath. So I'll take a breath and then we're going to go into the awards ceremony because I'd like you all to get out your questions and see what kind of, if any, valuable prizes you might earn. Okay, does everybody have their sheets? Okay, and Mandy or someone is somebody here to be able to dole out our prizes, I think. We're about to dole out prizes. Thank you, Mandy. But we're going to go through it first. So what city hosted this famous kiss? Everybody? New York City, right? It's New York City. I think it's Times Square. Not sure. Looks like Times Square. What does this kiss celebrate? That's right. VJ Day, the end of World War II. What is the date of this event, within three months? August 45 is right. August 45. It's like August 14, I think, so three months after, three months before. You score yourself, okay? Three months after, three months before, you get credit. Two points for city and then one point for the others. What city does this depict?
Berlin.
Berlin. That is right. What occasion is being celebrated?
All of the Berlin Wall.
All of the Berlin Wall. Very good. I thought people would get this one. But what is the name of the monument in the background?
Brandenburg Gate.
What? Brandenburg Gate. Yeah, anything with a lot of Bs and Rs in it and Berg on the end. Give yourself credit for it, okay? Brandenburg Gate. I'm sorry. Two, one, one. Two, one, one. Two for city and then one for each of the other ones, okay? What city is this? What are the houses in the foreground affectionately known as? Painted ladies. I think a lot of people got this one. What style of architecture? Be specific.
Januarian Victorian.
That's... I don't think that's right. I'll give credit for Victorian, but I'll give an extra point if someone said Queen Anne Victorian. I think that's Queen Anne. So one point for Victorian, two points for Queen Anne Victorian, okay? What city is this?
Rio.
Did most people get this one? But what is the name of this statue?
Christ the Redeemer.
Christ the Redeemer. Okay, good. We're going to get some competitive answers on this. Christ the Redeemer is correct.
Two and one.
Okay. Yeah, that's... Sorry, that was two and one. Two and one. Two points and then one point. Okay, what city is this?
Florence.
Okay, good. I didn't know it was going to be that obvious. Who designed this dome?
Brunelleschi.
Bam, on Brunelleschi. Brunelleschi is the answer. Two point for city, one for Brunelleschi. Who was inspired by this dome?
Michelangelo.
Michelangelo. I thought people might get that last one, right? Two, one, one for that. What city is this?
Chicago.
What is this statue affectionately known as?
Bean.
The Bean, right. The Bean. Anything with the Bean in it? Okay, I have to look at even this one myself. Oh, sorry. What... So two points, one point. What is its real name?
Cloud Gate.
Cloud Gate. That is right. Wow, that could be one of the defining moment there in this whole quiz. Okay, all right, all right. What city is this? What's that house on the left?
Morris Mansion.
Which... What is it? Morris Mansion, right. And then what is that building on the right?
Nvidia's.
On the left? Nvidia's headquarters, right. So when was Morris Mansion built? Historic landmark, people?
Oh, I put eighteen twenty-two.
Ooh, they're hiding. They're hiding.
I put eighteen twenty-two.
It needed to be within five years. Eighteen ninety-two is the right answer.
How many years?
Within five years. They did a lot of fist pumping on that one. Yeah. People weren't guessing. They didn't want to guess, but when they heard the right answer, there was fist pumping. Okay, Nvidia. When was it where Nvidia headquarters built?
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty... I think twenty eighteen for this particular building. So within... Another part of it was twenty twenty-two, so within five years of twenty eighteen.
You're talking about the bridge or is that the main?
No, the main, the giant one.
How do the buildings work on that?
I'm sorry. Two for Santa Clara, one each for the residences and one each for the dates, or for the building names and one each for the dates. So a lot of points given away on that one. Okay. What city is this? Who got London? London is right. Very good. You know what bridge it's on? I would give a bonus point for that. Waterloo Bridge. I think that's Waterloo Bridge. Okay, who is this artist?
Banksy.
Banksy, good. People did get this one. You were smart. Louise, they're smarter than you said.
I didn't say anything.
Louise said people weren't going to get that one.
No, I said they were.
Just kidding, Louise and we're all pleasantly surprised. Okay. What city... I'm sorry, points. Two, two. Two for each. This could be one that distinguishes people too who got that one. Two, two. Okay. What city is this? What? New York City, that's right. What building is being constructed? Rockefeller Center. Rockefeller Center. So city is two, building is one. What is the approximate year of this photo within five years?
Nineteen thirty-two.
Nineteen thirty-two is spot-on.
It has to be within five.
So from twenty-seven to thirty-seven.
But he went up backwards.
Okay. So an interesting fact about this, I actually looked this up. I was so curious. I see it so often. This is... Is this photo candid or staged?
Staged.
Staged. It's a staged photo. They were promoting, I don't know, the construction of the building or something. They actually posed these... I think these gentlemen do stuff like this, right? It's amazing how fearless they were, but it was actually a staged photo. This is not capturing a candid moment. They were kind of propped that way, but still off-the-charts crazy. Okay, finally. What city is this?
Washington.
What famous speech?
I Have a Dream Speech.
What year? Must be exact.
Sixty-eight is not right.
Sixty-three. I got this wrong too. I said sixty-five and I was wrong. I said sixty-five. So two for DC, one for I Have a Dream Speech, and the year is nineteen sixty-three. One point for that.
Two, one, one.
Like most of them. Okay, so put your totals together and raise your hand... Keep your hand raised if you got thirty points or more. Thirty points or more. Okay, we have a good number of people at thirty points or more. Okay, what about thirty-two points or more? How many hands? Put the hands up high. Put your green card up so I can see. Put your green... So thirty-two points or higher. Oh, we've got only two? Is that only three? Thirty-two points or higher? Okay, thirty-three points or higher? Thirty-four points or higher? Thirty-five points or higher? Okay, so thirty-four. Did you tie for thirty-four?
I got thirty-four.
Oh, you've got thirty-four too? Put your green card up. You can't... You have to abide by the same rules everybody else does.
You can use it, I don't want it.
Oh, okay. All right, so no gift for you. Moral victory and minus...
I know what you're requesting.
Minus points for attitude. Everyone... So we've got some pretty great gifts here. So the three people who got thirty-four or more are four. Is it four?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, thirty-four. Three people who've got thirty-four, come on up. Okay, who got the Queen Anne answer correct? Okay. You get this place of promise book. You also get this lovely prize. And thirty... Did you get thirty-four? And you got thirty-four?
I think so. I just have a question.
You think you got thirty-five?
I think probably because I put the number on it.
Those look pretty good.
But I miss over here, I don't know, but I know that's... But I bought these florists, but you know, Filippo, right?
Brunelleschi. Yeah, Brunelleschi.